Excellent. Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for December 1st, 2020 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for conducting, for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the Boston, of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means that you will not see yourself on screen and you will remain until administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meeting, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representative of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project. That is, those individuals who live, live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application by the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, first click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connecting to the hearing via telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Once again, for those on the phone, press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Before we get started, I'd like to, as usual, make, uh, take, um, see who's on, um, is Mark Fortune here?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mark Olick.
Yes.
Mr. Rogirio.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Legris.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Fannato.
Good morning, I'm here.
Good mo- welcome to the Board as an alternate member, Jean.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. DeVoe.
Present, good morning.
Good morning, may I ask all Board members to make sure that your video is on and that you are visible? I'd like to check if Jeff Hampton is on too, from the BPDA.
I am alive, yes, Madam Chair.
I'm glad to know that you're alive. Um, I'd also like to congratulate Ayesha Miller, who's done a super outstanding job as Miss Ambassador here with, for her new title. She is going to be the Civic Engagement Zarina for the City of Boston, so congratulations, Ayesha Miller.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, when do you start your new role?
Monday.
Oh, okay. We will miss you, but we know where to find you, so that's a good thing. Okay, um, so, Mr. Fortune, may we get to the agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning to everyone. With the first order of cases, extensions, case BOA 727-018, 331A to 333 Newbury Street. Madam Chair, this is due to expire actually 12/15/20. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dennis Quilty, Attorney at 28 State, representing the applicant in this matter, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Quilty, what is the reason for the extension?
This has been a very long process. This is a cannabis application at this site, which has been in the system since 2017. And there have been a number of difficulties with the changeover between the earlier cannabis application process and the new Boston Cannabis Board process. They had numerous trips back and forth to the ZBA for Board Final Arbiter on some provisos of their original permission, which was granted in December of 2017, but have still thus far been unable to finalize the post-community agreement, which is now required. Uh, this, for example, was not required when this matter was before you back in 2017. Uh, I appeared before you last year to seek another, uh, to seek an extension at that time until this point in time, if you will. Uh, and because of, you know, not only COVID, but other issues causing them to be unable to get this HCA agreement, here we are back in front of you. So it literally keeps the project alive. It's gone through the Neighborhood Association, the Federal Architectural Services.
Let me ask Mr. Quilty, um, so when do you expect resolution? And how many deferrals have you, or extensions have you requested so far?
I just, to my knowledge, Madam Chair, the only one that I'm familiar with is the one that I represented this applicant on approximately one year ago.
Okay.
And that's, that's it, to my knowledge, I don't, I didn't have any.
Okay, so, so do you expect resolution in before this, this expires? Should we grant this extension? Because we are really not interested in keeping these projects alive if there is no progress being made.
Uh, there is, there is progress, Madam Chair. It literally was the changeover as a suggest, or they were in the system before the present BCB regulations. Uh, the BCB has been handling these matters very expeditiously, so they have every reason to believe that this final piece will be allowed. And it's really what's required now to keep the, the project alive. They've been literally paying rent, et cetera, for this location for some time.
So may I?
To get it done.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend from one year from the termination date, 12/15.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, just a reminder.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know I'm, I'm beginning to recognize, recognize your voices more clearly, but if you could please state your name so that we can have it for the record before you make a motion or you second, okay? Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 849-594-80 Marion Street. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on 1/15/2021, name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney John Haskell, with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the petitioner. Seeking an extension this morning, uh, we unfortunately were delayed in the submission of our construction documents to ISD. Uh, and we're advised by the Plans Examiner to seek an, uh, an extension by the Board due to COVID-19. Uh, so we are before you today seeking a extension. We have submitted all of our construction documents, so we're actively in the permitting process to pull out permit.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to, Mark Erlich, motion to extend for a year from date of termination.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is anybody opposed? No, motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 675-434-211-GREEN STREET. Madam Chair, this did expire in 5/26/2019, but it has been in court. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning, this is Michael Ross with a business address of One International Place. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is a second extension. Uh, however, there was a timing issue with the first extension. Um, it was extended, um, until two years from the date of the permit of when it should have been issued, rather than two years from the date of the end of litigation. Um, and I think counsel for the Board agrees with this. However, since we didn't discuss this on the record, as I just did just now at our first initial meeting, um, I wanted to both correct that initial issue and then, you know, since, since it would have expired in May of next year, based on our previous extension, I would be here for the, for the second extension if possible. They did not get this project underway because of COVID, essentially. So, uh, and it's a little more words than I probably needed to say, but I'm, I'm, I'm requesting of the Board an extension from when it should have been extended to, which would have been September, uh, 2022. And I can explain kind of how I got there, if you'd like me to.
So, so you're asking for an extension to September 22 or 21?
Uh, 23, actually, and I can explain how I got there.
I'm sorry, again, 21 or 22?
Actually, 23, Madam Chair, and I can explain how I got there, if I could.
Because, you know, this Board is unwilling to give extensions for more than a year because, as I said to the, to one of the previous applicants, that we are looking to get things to closure, rather than have them sit open for, um, a long period of time.
Yeah, understood, Madam Chair, I think this will probably be the last time you see me. I just wanted to get the full benefit of what we were initially requesting and unfortunately, I think we used the wrong date. So, um, I mean, I would respectfully request, uh, an extension till September 27th, 2023. I was previously extended for May 26, 2021, uh, which would have expired, you know, in, next year in May. Um, the rea- May was the end of the, the actual hearing date, as opposed to the actual litigation date. The litigation anniversary was September 27. So, it would have been September 27th, 2020, would have been the, the end of it, really, just a couple of months ago. I came before you early this year to extend it. You extended it by two years, so you would have extended that, at that point, to September 22, 2022. And since I'm in front of you now, I was, I was requesting that second extension, but, you know, if, if you don't want to do that, and it's just for here, for me to correct the record, I guess I can do that too. But I would request an extension to September 27th, 2023, if the Board would permit it.
Okay, um, this is an exception to our rule, but I'm going to kind of cut, uh, cut the baby in half and look for an extension until, uh, September 27th, 2022, okay?
Okay.
May I have that motion, please?
So moved, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 848-572-33G-WALLLEY STREET. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on 12/14/2020, name an address, fill the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner STREET, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, the Board granted relief, uh, two, oh, two years ago for the project at 33G Wally for an eight-unit townhouse development. Uh, we have been making progress on finalizing plans. Obviously, as is the case with many projects, COVID has delayed things a bit. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing that and require brief extensions, so we're requesting one year from date of expiration.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, motion to extend from one year from date of expiration.
Egress, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next three cases in for extension, calling BOA 764-048-5-JERUSALME-N-PLACE. There are two companion cases, BOA 764-051-7-JERUSALME-N-PLACE and BOA 764-043-9-JERUSALME-N-PLACE. Madam Chair, these are due to expire on 12/15/2020. Name an address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, William Ferrollo, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, 28 State Street. We are requesting one-year extension. Last year, due to the fact that.
Could you speak up, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you speak up? Okay, a little.
Is that any better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, repeat, Attorney William Ferrollo, McDermott, Quilty, and Miller, 28 State Street, on behalf of the applicant. This matter was, uh, extended for one year, a year ago, uh, at which time we were in the process of redesigning due to the fact that the fire department had raised some issues with regard to egress. Uh, this is, uh, an attached, uh, three, two-unit dwellings. By the time we did that, we had to revise designs so that we made it back for design review. That also led to an issue with a lender.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Mr. Ferrollo, so we understand that this hasn't just sat on a shelf somewhere, so we're comfortable with this, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for one-year extension, Joe.
Second, Legris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case for Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 579-098-3OD STREET. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mark Lacass, Lacasslaw, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. Um, this matter was approved by the Board in August of 2016 and a building permit was issued in October of 2017 and construction thereafter commenced on this new three-unit dwelling, uh, structure. Uh, subsequent amendment permit application was filed, uh, making design changes to the exterior envelope of the building. And that was the subject of BPDA Design Review, which was a proviso of your original decision. And the BPDA Design Review was approved on October 16 of 2019 by Staff Architect Michael Canizzo. Um, and the amendment permit on those design changes was issued in November of 2019. All of the construction has been completed and in connection with the Certificate of Occupancy process and the final sign-off, our Plans Examiner recommended that we seek Board Final Arbiter for one particular design change and that is that the original plans that this Board approved showed a rear staircase that was open-air and as a result of the design changes, the staircase is now enclosed. Uh, that does not change the footprint of the building, nor implicate any additional zoning review, but rather, we are submitting this matter so that the Board's record, uh, conforms to the as-built plans.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, motion to approve of Mark.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case for the Board Final Arbiter, calling BOA 827-054-623-625-DORCHESTER AVENUE. Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Tanner Payne, um, with a business address of 8 Alton Place in Brookline. Um, I'm, uh, good morning, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm the property owner of this, uh, particular address. Um, we, uh, we submitted a permit application that requested to change the use and occupancy of the property from a one-family dwelling with a store to a two, two-family dwelling, as well as add living space to the basement and add a roof deck to the top of the building. Um, the decision granted the necessary variances, um, which also included a proviso making issuance of the permit subject to design review by BPDA due to the fact that the permit application sought to construct a roof deck. I have decided, uh, not to move forward with, uh, performing the basement expansion or adding the roof deck, uh, due to financial considerations. Therefore, the purpose of this letter is to request a modification of the decision to strike all references to the roof deck basement work, the roof deck and the basement work, and eliminate the design review proviso so that a permit may issue for the sole purpose of confirming the use and occupancy of the property as a two, two-family dwelling.
So, uh, we do have a question for you, so give us the, the proposed final size of each unit. Uh, and this unit one would be without the basement, what is the proposed size?
Uh, the proposed size for you, uh, so this, so the, these are existing conditions. I purchased the property in 2014, not knowing that it was not a legal two-family. Um, it is, um, it, it, I, I found that out after the fact, when I was going to do these things, that, that, that I didn't have the legal occupancy.
Okay.
Unit one, unit one is, is 620 square feet existing.
And, and a studio or a one-bedroom, what is it?
It is a one-bedroom apartment.
Okay, Mr. Erlich, you good with that?
Yeah, as long as the, uh, to the applicant, have you submitted a revised set of plans that show, uh, absence of a roof deck and no extension to the basement?
Uh, we have, well, we, we, uh, we submitted, uh, the existing conditions plans last week, uh, over to, um, Stephanie Haynes. Um, uh, and so that's, that, that's what we submitted, I think, to, for you guys to just look at today, which was part of my, which was part of my original application set. Um, it just didn't have the, uh, unit square footages. Um, of course, we're going to submit much, you know, more in-depth plans to the Plan Examiner as we, you know, go for the building permit.
Okay, now, I would make a motion to approve, but hold signature until the, uh, the most current plans are available.
Thank you.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, before, Madam Chair, before, call the 9:30 cases for deferrals and withdrawals. I do want to, uh, do a little housekeeping here. We have two cases that in the paperwork are scheduled for 9:30, but they're not going to be heard until 12:30. Those are going to be the first two cases in that order that I call them, so I'm just going to call them for the record that these two cases, uh, BOA 111-370-442 to 44-GLENROSE-RIVER, this BOA 940-718-1524-VFW-PATWAY are going to be heard, the first two cases, uh, 12:30.
Okay, um, so this is, um.
They're on the 12:30 agenda, but they're not, they were.
Okay.
scheduled for 9:30, so.
Okay, so we just want to put that on the record. If anyone is here for those two cases, please, uh, log back in at 12:30.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to call the cases for deferral or withdrawal. If you could give me the address first, please.
47 Condor Street, please, Mr. Secretary.
For the record, calling BOA 111-0007-47-CONDOR STREET. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner STREET, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Uh, Madam Chair, this is the first request for a deferral for this project. Uh, we are making some changes based on community feedbacks, uh, at the Last of Butters meeting and we will need to have the plans reviewed by ISD, um, in accordance with the Board's practice.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for deferral, Mark Fortune.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
We'll have a date of February 2nd at, at 12:30.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Address, if there are any other deferrals or withdrawals, address, please.
604 East Broadway, Mr. Secretary.
For the record, calling BOA 112-1204-604-EAST-BROADWAY. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is George Marantzi. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Uh, Madam Chair, members, requesting an extension in this matter. The reason for the extension is that there have been revisions to the plans that were just presented to the community last night. Additionally, uh, the Plans Examiner has not had enough time to review those plans and stamp them so that they could be seen by the Board at today's hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral, Mark Fortune.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
We'll have a date of February 2nd, 2021, at 12:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30?
Yes, uh, 6 Kelly Court in Charlestown, this is Tim, Timothy Shan, I'm the architect.
For the record, calling BOA 106-7117-6-KELLY-COURT. Name an address for the record, please.
Uh, Tim Shan, 9 Wall Street in Charlestown, I'm the architect for the project. Um, we've had a few rounds of, uh, drawing changes and I just, the drawings have not been submitted early enough for a full review, so we're just seeking our first deferment, um, to get our, you know, to get a review from ISD.
Motion for deferral?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We'll have a date of, uh, February 23rd at 12:30.
That's my birthday, thank you very much.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes.
Address, please.
Requesting deferral for.
Address, please.
Uh, 546 and 548 East Fourth Street.
Okay, for the record, let me follow me for the record, sir. For the record, calling BOA 106-6047-546-EAST-FORTH STREET. Companion case BOA 106-6050-548-EAST-FORTH STREET. Name an address for the record, please.
Gary Mendoza, I'm the project architect representing, um, the owners. I'm at 32 Waldeck STREET, Dorchester, Mass. This is our first request, uh, Madam Chair and Board, for, um, a, um, deferral based on a, uh, request to re-advertise from the planning.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, Mark Fortune, make a motion for deferral.
Second, Legris, second.
Favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And the date, please?
Uh, we'll have a date of February 23rd of 2021, 12:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30 only? Nearing on, Madam Chair, I'll call the first case and to the, uh, record, calling BOA 104-0938-231-SARATOGA STREET. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling and renovate the structure. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, the MFR is a forbidden use in a 3F 2000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, employee ratio is excessive and Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Matt Echol with Drago in Tuscano, with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of 231 Saratoga STREET. With me on the.
With me on the call this morning is Alba Madrigal, the owner of two thirty-one Saratoga Street, and David Choi, the project architect. As mentioned, we're seeking to change the occupancy of the existing three-family residential dwelling to a four-family residential dwelling and to renovate the structure. The zoning sub-district is a three-F two-thousand, and the lot size is twenty-five hundred square feet. In terms of floor plan, there's going to be one unit per floor. There's already existing units on floors one, two, and three, and we're seeking to legally update and create a fourth unit in the lower level. Are there any changes to the building's print or the...
Let me just jump to the, to the chase, go directly to the chase. Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement. Tell us if, because you know that we are not really interested in increasing occupancy in basement dwellings, so tell us why this should happen. What's the floor-to-ceiling height? What's the square footage of that unit? It appears that you already have, as far as the use is concerned, you've maximized use of the building. It's a three-F in the three-F district, so please tell us why you need, why, rationalize for us the need for that fourth unit.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. So, just make sure I hit all your questions, but the ceiling height is seven foot six. The proposed fourth unit would have three means of egress. One, coming up the existing stair to the first floor, and then out the front, out the rear, where there's also a common egress with a common mechanical room, and then there's an existing side door already on the right side. So, there's three means of egress, plus egress windows, and the floor-to-ceiling is seven-six. The proposed size of the unit is seven hundred and forty square feet. We are proposing a one-bedroom, one-bath unit. For that rationalization, this is all existing space. We're seeking to really clean up the whole building. Right now, this is just all kind of dead storage and utility space, so in part of rehabbing the building, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to create a fourth unit here and comply with all building code requirements. The existing units are, as I mentioned, all on floors one, two, and three, one unit per floor. In terms of the violations that were read into the record, we are seeking a use variance for that fourth unit, which is a three-F two-thousand sub-district. We are five hundred square feet short for the additional lot per additional unit requirement. FAR allowed is one point oh, we're proposing a one point seven-eight. Again, this space is all existing. We would just be converting, obviously, the lower level into living space, but no additions or increase to the height. Open space, we're short by about thirteen square feet per dwelling. And then finally, parking, we would be required to create one more parking space for this property, based on the existing conditions and the fact that it is an existing structure. There's no way to add any parking, so we'd be seeking a parking variance.
Madam Chair. Yep.
Okay, so the, the, I want to make sure that I understand this right, because it looks as though the only bedroom is in the window. Collette, can you back up a little bit? Because I'm looking at this plan, and it looks like the only bedroom, only window is in the bedroom. So, please, tell us how this is all going to work.
So, Madam Chair, there is an egress window in the bedroom where it shaded kind of a very light, or whatever color that is. There's also a existing egress window in the rear, where it's labeled laundry and storage, as well as if you look at the rendering of the existing conditions pictures, which are previous in the slideshow, there is an existing front window, I believe two windows actually as well. There's a window right in that bay, and then to the left of the bed. So, that's three thoughts.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, so I see the front steps, I see the window tucked in under the stairs. Is that the stairwell access to the basement?
The win, apologies, so the window tucked in under the stairs in the front of the building, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that would be the primary means of ingress and egress. There are also doors on the side and the rear for this unit.
Okay, so if the access from the bedroom is in that little alleyway between the two buildings, I, can you explain what the distance is and how much does this applicant own? Does it, does he or she own the entire alleyway?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We have three, three and a half feet on the right side, so that whole alley is ours to access the rear of the yard, as well as that side door and the rear door.
Okay. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Well, so this is actually a better solution to this kind of proposal than we have seen in the past, because the unit is in the back half, two-thirds of the basement, where because the grade level goes down, it's almost, most of it is actually at, or, or, I mean, most of it is below grade, whereas the front part is the part that I think we would be concerned with, because it's, it's near grade, but that's where the laundry and storage and the mechanical rooms are. So, I, I think this is a more plausible proposal than some of the other dungeons that we've seen in the past.
So, Mr. Echol, can you clarify that, that in fact, the unit is, did you say in the, in the front of the building, Mr. Olick, or in the rear of the building?
No, in the front of the building, in the basement, is laundry storage and, and mechanical. In the rear is the living space and bedroom, and that's, that's close to grade.
Are we reading that correctly?
Mr. Olick, Madam Chair, I believe you do, do have it flipped, where the bay is represents the, the front, so that living space, the bedroom itself is fully pretty much above grade, if you look at the elevation slide.
Oh, okay. Hang on, Mr. Echol, so you're telling me the bay window, that's, that's the front?
Correct, Mr. Olick, yes.
Oh, well, in that case, I think you've got a problem.
Okay.
Because if you go down the elevation, you can see on the side elevation, there is, the, the unit is, is largely below, below grade initially, and it's not until you get to the rear half of the, the building that you're at grade. And you've got, and, and in my view, you should switch up the, you should put the living space in the rear and the mechanical and storage space in the front.
Okay, so given that this is the plan we have, let's go ahead. Are there any additional questions from the board?
Could we just quickly see the elevation, Madam Chair? Is there a plan?
Yeah, go, go down, Collette, go down another one, there. But you want to go over to the left where the side elevations are. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, that, that, that front window would be the living space with windows on the front as well, and then that middle window and the door are essentially right where the bedroom are, so that's where it really becomes fully at grade. Overall, seventy percent above grade, but as you mentioned, Mr. Olick, does slope significantly from the front to the back.
So, that door essentially is in the public, in the public's realm, it's not part of the unit?
It is part of the unit, Madam Chair. Directly to the right of that door becomes a common hallway, which provides the third means of egress to this unit, and, and that's where the entrance to the common utility room is. So, this unit does have three separate means of egress, plus the egress windows.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on the record in support. The Office of Neighborhood Services held an Abar's meeting on January thirty, where the applicant addressed most of the concerns of the Abar. We also received letters of support from Abar's, including five from Director Abar's. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The counselor would like to go on record in support of the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have nine letters of support.
I don't, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Mr. Roger, can I, can I add onto that that the design review would include a possible rearrangement of the floor, of the plan in the basement?
Absolutely. You would just want them to flip that, Mr. Olick? Like how you thought you were reading the plan, do you just want to see if flipping it makes more sense?
Yeah, I mean, you have to deal with where the existing stairs are, but yes, flipping it makes much more sense.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I for the record, will just go on record in opposition to this basement, basement dwelling. Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-seven one-three-one-two two-twenty-six to two-twenty-eight Princeton Street. This is a...
Coastal, Coastal Ligris will recuse himself.
This is a change of occupancy from an existing building from five-family dwelling to a seven-family dwelling. Renovate all floors and basement of the existing building. Violation Article twenty-seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, Section eight, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-three, Section eight, the use of accessory parking is forbidden. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article nine, Section two, a change in non-conforming use. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of eleven Beacon Street from Drago in Tuscano.
Hold on for a second, please. Mr. Olick, I just have a, a, a small emergency that I have to deal with. Do you mind chairing and working as architect for a few minutes?
Oh, I have two hats, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And a bowtie.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, will the applicant please continue with the presentation?
Mr. Olick, here's for the record, you might want to note to the applicant that there's now a five-member board hearing this, this appeal.
Got it, okay, so the applicant well knows that when there's a five-member board, we provide the opportunity to take an administrative deferral, because you, otherwise you will need a unanimous vote of the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is attorney Jeff Drago. As much as I wanted to go forward with this, we are going to seek that deferral option.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Secretary, motion for a second. Motion for a deferral.
I just got a question. If Christine's coming back, can we defer this to later on in the nine-thirties, or do we have to? I just feel bad pushing him back until like February when we defer.
That's certainly a reason. Mr. Drago, would you, if, if we have a six-member board, would you want to continue with the hearing?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Roger, and Mr. Olick for that option.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that off until Mr. Raj, the chair, returns.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, what I'll do is I'll put it to the last case of the nine-thirties, and hopefully that will be enough sufficient time for the chairwoman to come back.
Makes sense, okay. Want to call the next case?
Yeah. Call the next case, calling BOA one-zero-seven two-five-zero-eight one-fifty-four Fayette Avenue. This would be a driveway, added driveway and parking space. The violation Article ten, Section one, a limitation of area of accessory uses. Article twenty-seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, the location of off-street parking. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman and the members of the board. My name is Su Jung Jo, and next to me...
Cheon Jo.
And behind us are our parents. The address is one-five-four Fayette Avenue, and we are here to ask for your review and approval on the driveway and parking space extension project, so we can utilize the space that we have not been able to for many years.
Okay, as I look at the plans to the applicant, it appears that you already have an existing condition of front yard parking, and you were, you were wishing to expand that from one to two cars, is that correct?
Yes, and also the space that we currently have, which is the blue highlighted area in the picture, is too small for us to even open the door with our car, and you can see the pictures in the next slides.
I'm, I'm not quite sure what you mean, it's too small to open the garage door?
No, it's too small. Once the car is parked in the existing park driveway, we cannot open the door, so we have not been able to utilize the space.
Okay, so here is, is our concern. As a board, we are, we do not approve front yard parking, and so the expansion of front yard parking is, I mean, this is an existing condition, so there isn't really anything we can do about it, but in terms of the expansion of front yard parking, while I understand your concern that it would make it more functional, that is not something that we are inclined to do. Mr. Fortune, do we have anything for Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, I'm just going to say that, Mr. Chair. Mr. D'Amico is waiting, that, he has basically said that this is front yard parking and the plan should be denied.
Okay, that is consistent to the applicant, that is consistent with the policies of this board in the past, so can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, do you want to take testimony first?
Okay, well, we can do that, although I think, I think the outcome is, is no, but yes, just for the sake of process, we should do that. Is anyone here to testify in favor of the applicant?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal received strong support from the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council and from the Abar's. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The counselor would like to go on record in support.
Is there any, any further testimony? Any hands raised?
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, secretary, I'm going to make a motion for denial. About the front yard parking.
Is there a second?
Second, Jean Panato.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Then that motion does not pass, because we are a five-member board. I, I should have offered the...
Your six-member board. Mr. Ligris came back.
Oh, Mr. Ligris is back, okay, then, then the motion passes, because I vote with a motion.
For the record, who is in opposition?
Joe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Calling it.
Go ahead.
Next case, calling BOA one-one-two three-five-two-three fifty-eight Everett Street. This is to extend living space into the basement. Violation Article fifty-three, Section nine, the number of allowed habitable stories have been exceeded, is the max. Article fifty-two, Section nine, excessive FAR. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago in Tuscano with a business address of eleven Beacon Street, on behalf of fifty-eight Everett Street. As mentioned, we're seeking to extend living space into the basement for unit one. The project would convert approximately three hundred and fifty-six square feet that are already existing in the basement into living space dedicated to unit one, which would allow for a family room and a laundry room. The zoning district's three-F two-thousand, and the lot size is two thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. This, the plan itself is fairly simple, the space has existed already. As I mentioned, it's currently just storage. This unit, this structure was renovated a few years back, so there's really not extensive work to be done, but there was never legalized space in the basement. Now, you can see there's separate, right now, storage and utility areas, and then that front part, the bottom left of your screen right now, would be the livable space for unit one. No bedrooms proposed, not a separate unit, just a family room. As mentioned, the two violations are FAR, where it allowed is one point zero. We're currently at a one point one eight, this three hundred and fifty-six additional square feet would bring us to a one point three four, so it's already a pre-existing violation. And also mentioned with the number of habitable stories, this is a three-story building right now, so the three hundred and fifty-six square feet in the basement would technically make it a four-story of habitable living space, but it wouldn't be a separate unit, as mentioned. So, with that, I'll pause and take any questions or comments from the board.
So, can you describe, what, what is the existing floor-to-ceiling height in the basement, and can you describe the egress mechanisms in the basement? And what the future access to the mechanical storage will be from the units 2 and 3?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So the ceiling height is 7'6", that's existing, it's already an existing space. The egress, there's a direct staircase that goes up to Unit 1 on the first floor. As mentioned, this is already dedicated space to this unit, so it's an interior connection there. You also have an egress door going towards the, kind of the middle of the building there, if you look at the far-left plan, which provides access out the rear. And that rear is also the same way that other residents in the building would get to their storage or mechanical areas. So there'd be two means of egress.
Okay, so it's 7'6" under existing conditions, is there a finished ceiling there now?
There is, Mr. Olick, yes, there'd be no changes to the ceiling of the floor.
Okay. Is there, the, switching hats, the plans are. Is anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Mr. Chair, sorry, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. The applicant addressed most of the concerns of the Butters during the community process, and Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association voted in support of this proposal, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support.
Is there anyone here speaking in opposition or in favor, any raised hands, Mr. Ambassador?
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support from the Jeffries Point neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, I have no resistance.
No questions from the board? Can I have a motion?
Motion approved. Do we need designer, designer?
No, we don't need designer.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion approved.
Second, Ligris.
Can I make a, can I add a proviso that there be no bedroom in the basement?
Aye, yep.
Okay.
All those in favor? Second with a proviso, Costa.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I do, I'm in support, I'm back, Mr. Olick, thank you.
Motion passes, and I'd be glad to pass the baton to the Chair.
Thank you.
Going back to two, well, going to go to the next two cases, calling BOA 105031524 terrace. There's the next case, BOA 1050279150 Swift Street. This is, this pertains to Swift Street parcel. This is to sublet this lot into two lots, one to be known as 2 Swift Terrace, with a three-family dwelling and lot two to be known as 150 Swift Street. The violation is Article 53, Section 36, the storage of construction equipment and materials is forbidden in the CE district. Article 53, Section 37, the rear yard is insufficient. This is, this is for 150 Swift, it's to confirm the existing four-bay flat roof storage structure. Legalize land use for commercial construction equipment and materials. The violation is Article 53, Section 36, the storage of construction equipment and materials is forbidden in the CE district, and Article 53, Section 37, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
There you go. Attorney Peter Lyons, 99 Fulton Street, Boston, Mass. And with me is the owner of the property, Joe Stefano.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Look at this. Unmuted.
Mr. Olick? I think.
Hello. Hello, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Hey, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, please put your, sir, please tell us what's being proposed?
Yes, this is Peter Lyons, 99.
I did hear that, tell us, talk us through what you're proposing, please.
Okay, this is a Article 5336, storage of construction equipment and materials forbidden in the CE district, and dimensional regulations, rear yard is insufficient. These properties, Madam Chairwoman, abut the Wood Island train station. So with regard to the rear yard problem, the tracks kind of wind in behind this home. At some points, there is a 6-foot backdrop, and then it lowers to 4 feet. With regard to the construction equipment, it's really not construction equipment. The operator of the home and the lot has been operating there since 1989. He has a plumbing business. He has four vehicles that he stores on the property. One is a pickup truck that he owns and is a private vehicle, and is licensed as commercial because it exceeds 10,500 pounds. His second vehicle is a Buick SUV, that's his wife's vehicle. And then he has two very small box vans that he uses for his plumbing business. Nobody comes to the property. Nobody, you know, enters or exits the property during non-work hours. It's, the hours of work are from 8:30 to 5 o'clock on a weekly basis.
So, Councilor, may I ask you a couple of questions?
So this, for all intents and purposes, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use
as far as the storage of vehicles?
That is correct.
Okay, and how long has that business been in there? Because I think the zoning was adopted in 93, I want to say, so. Yeah, is that true? So I, so that's why I'd like to figure out, did it predate the zoning? Or has it been subsequent to the zoning?
It predated it, predated it 1989.
Okay, okay, so hold on, hold on, Mr. Lyons.
Sure.
The real intent of this is to separate these lots with the intention of possibly renovating or selling off the property to Swift.
No.
No.
No, here's what happened, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Back in 2013, we had that carport, which was encroaching on a public way. We were cited at that time, and with the assistance of attorney Ed Colburn down at ISD and other people at ISD, we decided that the best way to remedy the situation was to go to the pickboard and buy the abandoned private way. So we did that, and that was approved November 7th in 2013. The problem we had is that we went back to you people in 2014. We did receive the requested variances, but unfortunately, they lapsed. So we're in court today with the ISD. They've been very helpful to us, and what we're trying to do is make sure that we get the proper variances, that we work with the community. I think, Mark, you have a number of letters in support of this proposal from the community.
Mr. Lyons, just hold on, okay?
Yes.
So, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Well, the plans are, I mean, de minimis, but, you know, for this purpose, they're okay.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, one quick question. When it was approved in the past, were there any provisos placed on it?
No.
No, it was straight approval with no screening and buffering, no design review, nothing like that?
No, there was not, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, so any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I could just follow up on your remarks, this is Ed Devoe. Just having this here in front of me, appears to be a very large wooden, a stockade fence. Does the applicant know the height of that?
Maybe about 7.5 feet.
Okay, so you know that 6 feet is allowed as a right? Anything above that needs to come before this board? So, well, thank you for, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Devoe. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, secretary here, just a quick note to what Mr. Devoe just mentioned. Bob D'Amico has spoke on this, but I believe he's an East Boston resident. I know there's no parking, it's not a parking issue here, but he'd like to strongly suggest denial because remove the fencing on city-owned property. And also be required to material in city, on city property as well as hazardous material on his property. So the opposition, when we do take testimony for support in opposition, there are some opposition letters that relate to what I just mentioned, so we do have support. So I'll wait the testimony.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. The Office of Neighborhood Services held a Butters meeting on July 28th, where the applicant addressed the concerns of the Butters and received their support. This proposal received strong support from Harvard View Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Lina or Michael, can you speak to us about any, any concerns about it being on city-owned land? Or anything about the storage of materials?
So we received a letter of opposition, I think that's the one Kevin mentioned that he has.
Okay, and, but, but in the, in the community meeting, was there any conversation about that? The storage of hazardous materials next to a residential structure, it would be an issue for us.
The only thing we made, that was, sorry, was mentioned is that this is something pre-existing, so that's why the support of the Butters was based on, because there's not going to be any change.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead, any more testimony?
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have a toll between the two projects of 16 letters of support and six letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands. Okay, hold on, Mr. Fortune, what is the opposition based on?
Pretty much what I just mentioned, Madam Chair. The applicant has, BTD installed no parking sites on one side of Swift Terrace to allow safe access. And then as Mr. D'Amico spoke, he would always strongly support a denial, strongly suggested denial, and the case also recommended remove the fencing on city-owned property. To be quite, also remove any material on the city property as well as hazardous material on the property. And that echoes the other five concerns that we have from the Butters, I believe.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chairwoman?
No, please bear in discussion. May I have anybody here to speak, Ms. Ambassador? Anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Thank you. Caller, you're unmuted.
Yes, hi. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Gail Miller, and I'm speaking as a proxy for Brian Burgland, an owner at 455 Frankfurt, and in the Butters of the property. He was never notified of these requests at the outset and did not have ample time to fully engage. He has been recently hospitalized, as I'm speaking for him. At the outset, this commercial business has been operating illegally for many years in a corridor enhancement zone, making these requests a moot point. They should be denied and prohibited activities ceased. For the past 20 years or more, this commercial business has created a nuisance on the street with heavy truck traffic, noise, and illegal parking on the narrow street. It is degrading the residential nature of the area. The four-bay structure referred to is now, for all intents and purposes, attached to city-owned property with no side yard variance, and was built legally on city-owned property before he managed to buy the parcel. The neighborhood is residential and for years has had to tolerate this commercial business, operating as a de facto junkyard, and it should not be allowed to continue operating in violation of the zoning codes. Google photos can be provided which illustrate the conditions.
Thank you.
Anyone here unmuted?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Melanie Roach-Lapuka. My wife, Megan Roach-Lapuka, and I live at 447 Frankfurt Street, number 3. We are Butters of the project, and we are in support of both projects. We believe our neighbors should be allowed to continue their business, which is their livelihood along with living on their property, which they have done for many, many years. We're strongly in support because we believe it would be unfair to have them tear down their business, which they've had for many years. We're not concerned about the trucks or what they're doing. It's not next to any residential building except for their own because it's between a cemetery and their house. So again, we strongly support the approval of the variances, thank you.
Thank you.
One more raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I'm going to need your help, board members, because, so I'm looking at the plans. I'm looking at Google Maps, and it looks like there is a 7-foot fence right in front of the residential property. Is that right, sir, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, and then it goes not only in front of the residential property, but it also goes in front of the extra-wide curb cut right before the cemetery?
That's the property line, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, and then.
And that's the property we acquired at the pickboard.
Okay, so the thing that highly concerns me is the fact that, you know, there is enough testimony to say that this works as a de facto junkyard. There's hazardous materials, you know, regardless of whether it was pre-existing, it sounds like the uses are not in support of the residential properties. And I'm looking at Google Maps, and across the street, there are some, you know, some well-kept homes. So I just need to make sure, and it looks like there is storage of materials on the residential property too. So to me, this is, you know, brings up a whole bunch of concerns for what's happening on these two lots. And it looks, yep, okay, so I, so those are my concerns. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that BPDA is on review for screening and buffering and looking at that fence, and that no hazardous materials may be stored on site.
I would second that, Ed Devoe.
Okay, so I want to make.
Mr. Chair, would you accept an amendment that the fence be modified to be code-compliant?
Well, that's what the design review, I thought, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So let's be specific, so the design review is focused on, one, the 2 Swift Terrace, it's going to make sure that that fence is, becomes code-compliant. I see that's 3 meters, but that's a pitch roof with one side door, so it's probably fine. So that's the, that's the proviso for the residential unit. On the, on the commercial structure, it's going to be, again, approval with design review, again, for the fencing, okay? And then additionally, it be limited to just storage of construction equipment, not materials.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I believe the testimony, this is rigorous. The testimony, the information provided by council is limited to actual vehicles.
Exactly.
Two box trucks, a non-commercial SUV, and a commercial vehicle. Can the proviso be limited to just the parking of those vehicles as opposed to construction equipment?
Exactly. So, that's why, because it is a request for construction equipment slash materials. So, we want to make sure that it is limited to construction, to, to... How many vehicles was that? That was three vehicles or four vehicles? Okay? And no, and no construction, other construction equipment or materials. Because we just don't, we don't want to go down, we don't want to go down that slippery slope of having it become storage for hazardous materials or, or other random junk. Okay, does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
Okay, so, so may I have a motion, please? Or conforming of that?
Not a motion, Madam Chair, because the motion already made.
Yeah. I'll second the motion with the provisos.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1080208, 108 or 110, Orleans Street. This is repairs to a roof, attach garage and install a roof deck on the garage. The violation, Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, Article 9, Fiction 1, a five-unit dwelling in a three-family sub-district. We want extension or a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello?
Is that the applicant's, can you put your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, good. This is John Gagarovic. I'm representing my mother. Yolanda Gagarovic is on the line. She's at 108 Orleans Street, the address. I am calling to just explain what the situation is here. The deck that we're talking about installing is, is something that is a final step in a repair to a leaky roof that's been chronically happening for a lot of years or so. The most recent repair has been a rubberization of the roof and throughout the entire dimension, going from the front of the street to the back, about 100 feet. What we're looking to do is to make it reusable again because we don't want to damage the rubberized repair by installing a deck in the front third of that area, representing about 400 square feet. The, if there's another picture on there about the fencing. There's, there's a picture of the fence, the new fence we installed around that garage area. It's consistent with the use that's been there for, since the 1960s, where, you know, my parents have used that as a patio area, and now we just don't want to go ahead and damage the roof repair that we just made that seems to have solved the problems of the water leakage that we've had.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, they're a little confusing. All I have, anyway, is the plot plan and then that picture that everybody is looking at. It looks like, to the applicant, it looks like it's already being used as a roof deck. Am I correct? Am I, am I right?
It has been, it has been in the past, yes. It's not currently. I think we have a couple of small items out there, like a, like a gas grill or whatever, but no one's using it at this time because we don't want to take a risk of damaging the rubberization that was placed there.
Correct.
Okay, so, so the surface of the top of the garage is now just a rubber roof?
That's correct.
And, and the proposal is to build a wooden deck on top of that? Because I don't have any plans showing that.
There is, in this combined file, there should be a drawing. Yeah, keep going. Right there.
Okay, yes, I mean, there is, there's a sort of hand sketch, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, Madam Chair, this is, this is a pretty simple proposal to put a roof deck on existing structure that already is fenced off and has been used as a patio. So, I suppose the drawings are adequate for that.
And just clarification, is it for one particular unit or is it for the entire building?
It has access, the patio area is accessible to the entire three-story building that's attached to it. There's three families in that building. And they, most of the time, it will be used by my mother, who lives on the second floor. Makes it real convenient for her to walk to some sun.
Okay, thanks.
It looks like, from the picture, it looks like the only access is from the second floor. Is that correct?
There's also an egress from the fire escape that's in between the two buildings. If you look at the top view in the picture, you'll see a metal fire escape that's attached. Love it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tremmely with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. The word of concern expressed by the abutters during the community process, and this proposal receives support from members of the Gob Street Citizens Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have 20 letters of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, really quickly, Madam Chair, it looked like that sketch, that there's a, there's just a fence, is a railing around the perimeter of that?
Yes, there is.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell from the drawing, maybe because we scrolled through it quickly, but does that meet safety requirements?
The, the existing fence that's shown in the photo, I mean, that's the problem. The drawings is there's a floor plan of the deck, but there's no elevation. But the exist, but the photo that's there on the first page wouldn't be satisfactory.
Okay, so...
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Sorry, I made a mistake. There are no letters of support. That's the next case, that's 20.
Okay, but it's just basically no comment, basically, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so let's, so what's the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, what, design review, I guess.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do design review if the railings already exist.
Honestly, when I had my deck done, before the permit was issued by ISD, they made sure my railing height was high enough. So, I think that there is a second level of checks to make sure that everything is up to code. So, so the motion is for approval. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 109018799 Trenton Street. Companion case, BOA 109018899 Trenton Street. This is replacing existing decks, they're in our code and making them larger, adding dormers to an existing shared floor, building a new staircase, and a full-height door out the basement. The violation is Article 27G, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Madam Chair, this is building code, the ninth edition 780 CMR 302, fire-resistant construction. Wall openings, windows are not allowed in the side lot line for insufficient distance between lot line and wall. The violation can be eliminated by moving the side lot line opening into the front and rear facades. The ninth edition 780 CMR 310, emergency escapes and rescue openings. Rescue openings from bedrooms shall open directly into a public way or yard or court that opens to a public way. The violation can be eliminated, moving the side lot line openings from bedrooms into the front and rear facade. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Meg Grady. I'm the owner of 99 Trenton. Thank you, Madam Chair, board, and community members. This is my home, my primary residence. It is a legal two-family with a one-bedroom apartment on the first floor that I have been working the last two years to renovate.
Hold on, Ms. Grady. I have a question for you. The, the way that we usually hold our hearings is that when there is building code relief, we like to have that addressed first. So, can you speak about whether you still need that building code relief? And, and if you don't, tell us how you corrected that.
Absolutely. So, if you go to the plan for the third floor, the entire reason for this proposal is I am on the second and third floor, and we need the head height to relocate the stairs. The existing stairs are extremely steep, and I have a two-year-old. It's unsafe. And so, we are proposing, it's a freestanding building. It's not attached, and so if you look, yep, right here. So, we need to put dormers on the sides. I am proposing very historic nature. I've already renovated. I don't want to do these large dormers that people are doing.
So, tell us, tell us about the, because it looks like you have fire-resistant rating, wall openings, they are not allowed inside the lot line. Have you dealt with all of those escape and rescue openings that are required or not required?
Correct. So, if you look at the, the window opening, which is a violation for into the side, which there are currently windows on the other floors in the sides. It's pre, it's pre-conforming, pre-nonconforming. I can switch the floor plan so that where the bedroom two is would not be a bedroom. It could be a study and move the study where the loft is now, and then it would have the appropriate egress. In order to make this project work, it does need side dormers because I need the head height to relocate the stairs.
Okay, hold on, hold on, okay. So, from what I understand, you have a system to address the building code. So, may I have a motion for denial of building code relief?
A motion to deny building code relief. Mark.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, now we are back to the zoning code relief, which is for, to replace the existing deck and to add the dormers. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lena Tremmely with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal receives strong support from Eagle Civic Association and from the abutters. We also received 20 letters of support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have 20 letters of support.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second, rigorous.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 999856527 E7 Street. This is to demolish an existing building, erect a four-story, eight-unit residential with 12 R-street parking spaces, front and rear roof decks. The violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim, you're unmuted.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board? Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim Johnson, architect, 599 East Broadway, South Boston. My client, Jim Pascal, is proposing to demolish the existing buildings and combine two lots to erect a four-story, eight-unit residential building with 12 parking spaces. This project does not require relief from the zoning code. It is 100% zoning compliance. Relief is only sought from the South Boston iPod. We have worked closely with the director abutters and their concerns and have their perspective of the project.
So, Mr. Johnson, just explain to us how this building works, the unit size, which, you know, we're always interested in, and how the parking is proposed to work? And if there is screening and buffering against the abutters?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a four-story building. The top floor is set back nine feet to give a nicer, a nicer elevation at the street. Units one and two are duplex units. They're two-bedroom, three-bath at 2,000 square feet. And then the upper floors at the second, third, and fourth floor are two-bedroom, two-bath units. They're all flats at 1,275 square feet. The parking is in the rear of the building. There is an existing garage, which we are going to keep and renovate to provide sound insulation to the abutters in the rear. There is one driveway on the right side. We're reconfiguring an existing curb cut. That's one way down and one way up from that rear parking area. We are working with abutters on both sides for fencing, if they wish, and all landscaping also.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay. I mean, once again, we have a basement unit. And if you look at the elevations or the sections, unfortunately, the living space is in the front, and that's where it is most below grade. It's a, it's a sloping lot in the, in the back of the building, but they, it is at or above grade. But the, the unit one, living space that is in the, in the basement is mostly below grade.
Yes, Mr. Ehrlich. We do have the required seven-foot-six ceiling height in the lower level. There are, we have our required egress windows at the front of the building, and this is not in a flood plain. We do have an interior perimeter drainage, so I think we'll have some good quality space, living space at the lower levels.
I'm looking, Mr. Johnson, I'm looking at AO1, the lower-level floor plan. It doesn't specify what, there's a bedroom, those are bedrooms in those, in those, in the basement, right? With the egress windows?
Right now, we show them as bedrooms, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the same problem that you've been before this board many times. This same problem we've had on a regular basis. In terms of light and air, it's really, it's really, yes, you've got a legal egress, but in terms of light and air, it's really limited.
Okay. We don't have any problem turning those, turning it into just a non-bedroom area, if that suits the board.
Okay, and the other thing I noticed is that you have roof decks. Can you speak to that?
Yes, of course, Madam Chair. These are dedicated roof decks to the two-top units. They're accessed via bulkheads with a roof door.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Johnson, was the total square footage of the proposed building?
Gross square footage is 13,272 square feet. The FAR required here is 2.0. We are at 1.6.
Okay, thank you. It's a sprinkler building, obviously.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Hailey Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held two abutters meetings, and Jim, the owner, met personally or virtually with the opposed abutters and got their support, and we have their letters of support on record. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four letters of opposition.
And what is the opposition based on, Mr. Fortune?
Density, height.
Madam Chair, I have three hands that are raised. Yes, let's hear from them, please. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can we? I would like to go on record in opposition.
Sure, Anna, go ahead. Put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from Butters and neighbors. They specifically called attention to the height and the four-story being out of character with their surrounding neighborhood, as well as density. They also highlighted quality of life issues related to the roof deck, privacy, noise concerns, as well as the loss of sunlight due to four-story. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I go forward? Yes, please.
Excuse me, Ayesha, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is Karen from Council of Saby, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Caller, you're on muted. Please put your name and address on the record. Jim, you're on muted.
I'm the owner, Ayesha. I'm good right now. I just, thank you.
Hi, Peg and Tom, you're on muted.
Hi, good morning. We are Peg and Tom O'Hearn at 535 East 7th Street. We're the director Butters of this project. The owner has reached out to all Butters and is very concerned with our concerns. We have met with him in person on numerous occasions, and he is diligently working to mitigate all of our concerns. We hope this project will be approved. It should be a big improvement to our neighborhood. The houses that are there need to come down. Thank you.
Try caller eight. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, again, just one more time? Sure. Caller, you're on muted. Thank you, Madam Chair. No further raised hands. Thank you. Jeff, I have a question for you. The South Boston iPod.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about the iPod because there is no zoning violation here. It's perfectly within the envelope that the zoning requires. What is the authority of the South Boston iPod, then?
Well, it doesn't exist right now.
Okay.
The iPod expired, so this project's been in the pipeline for years. So the only thing that they would have to obtain from the Board of Appeal is an iPod permit under Article 27. But the iPod itself does not exist.
Okay, so it's, how did it? So, Mr. Johnson, maybe I should ask you. How is it that, so, so hold on. Jeff, when did the iPod expire? Was it like two years ago?
Yeah, it was in October, I think, two years ago, after we made some minor amendments to Article 68.
Okay. So, Mr. Johnson, this is listed as a new project. What took it so long to get to this board after? Because what I'm curious about is, you know, given the zoning now, would it be zoning compliant or not? Johnson, did you hear my question?
Yes, I was unmuted. Yes, ma'am. There have been several amendments to Article 68 beginning in June of 2017. This appeal was filed in September of 2019 and is compliant with Article 68 at that time. However, the South Boston iPod was in effect. Amendments, subsequent amendments to Article 68 happened in October, the following month of 2019. So this has been, it's only been 14 months since we filed our appeal. We had the COVID issue. There are other issues related to the developer and his former partner.
So I'm just trying to get this chicken-and-egg scenario here. You know, if the South Boston iPod expired in, excuse me, 10/18, and you filed on 9/19, then you should have been listed as just, you know, under the regular zoning versus under the iPod.
I believe the iPod, Madam Chair, and Jeff Hampton may be able to shed some light, was extended and it sunsetted in October of 2019.
It did.
Okay, okay, okay. I get it.
So we've applied in September 2019, 2019. We were 100% zoning compliant except for the iPod.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPA design review with a particular emphasis on eliminating the bedrooms from the basement level.
Second, Ligris.
Now, hold on. So it's eliminate bedrooms in the basement? And the applicant did talk about working on screening and buffering. I think it would be helpful to have BPA involved in that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Are we returning to 226, 228? Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go back to case BOA 1071312, 226 to 228 Princeton Street. I'm going to read it back into the record because it's been a while. Change of locks to an existing building from five families to a seven family and renovate all floors and basement existing buildings. Violation is Article 2017. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, a lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-screen parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-screen parking, design and maneuverability. And Article 9, Section 2, change in non-conforming use. Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, Ligris will be recusing.
So may I ask? I think you heard everybody to speak and support everybody in opposition. And how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
We have the same problem. We seem to be getting a flood of them. The basement living space is well below grade.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff Drago. I don't know if we even talked about this case yet. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we haven't done any testimony or anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead then, Mr. Drago. Put your name and address on the record. Speak to the violations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of 11 Beacon Street. On behalf of the petitioner, we also have the architect, Adam Glassman, on the call. Just a point to note in the description, this project has changed. And so all the violations have changed as well. And the plans that Mr. Ehrlich has that, the new proposal is to change the occupancy from an existing five-family residential dwelling to a seven-family residential dwelling with five parking spaces in the rear to also include a full renovation, a historic renovation. But there is no longer a fourth floor on this building. So that completely was taken off. And I just needed, wanted that to be reflected because it was mentioned in the description.
How did you change the violations?
So we, thank you. We actually removed violations for heightened stories, heightened feet in the yard, rear yard. So there's no longer any of those violations. We're compliant now.
And did your parking change? Your parking requirement change?
So, no, we still have a parking violation. But we were able to, right now existing, there's a garage in the rear that will be razed. And so we're able to create two to three additional spots from what's there now. So there'll be five.
And what's required on the zoning?
So we would have to have three new spaces for the new unit, and we would have two.
Okay. Let's see. Tell us about the basement dwelling, then.
Sure. So as part of the proposal, we are seeking a basement unit, although this would be a 975-square-foot unit, seven-foot-seven-inch height, floor to ceiling. It would have two egress windows in the front of the building. So one would be for the living room. One would be for the bedroom. And we have also added, if you go down a few more slides, an egress door. So a hallway that would go down the middle would go through the utility rooms on either side, and then a hallway out to the rear of the property. Also to note, the significant grade changes at the front. So I know this had come up in some of the other hearings just recently. But the, so the living space that we're proposing is at the front of the building, but that is where it's at its highest grade. As we go upstairs, so there's unit two and three would be housed on the first floor. Those are one-bedroom, one-bath unit, 835 square feet. The second floor is units four and five. Those are two-bedroom, one-bath, 900-square-foot units. And then as we go up to the third floor, it's units six and seven. Those are two-bed, one-bath, 910-square-foot units. Right now, this has been used as a rental building, and we're proposing condos for all of these units with a historic renovation. I can also go over the violations mentioned, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The use in this area is a 3F. So we are proposing seven units. It's existing five. This area is a 3F 2,000. So we've got 5,000 square feet. Additional lot area, we would need 3,000. FAR, what's existing now is 1.13. And with the addition of the basement, it would bring us up to 1.32, which has been reduced when we took off that fourth floor. Our open space is required. We've got 441 square feet total. 300 square feet per unit would be required. And also the parking violation that I had mentioned earlier. But we are adding parking in the rear with green space where the garage was.
Okay. You know, I'm just going through Article 53 because for some reason I was fairly sure that basement units were not allowed in Article 53. Jeff? Jeff, do you? Did the BRA come up with any regulation, recommendations on this?
I can read you, if you want to hold on just a second, what our recommendation was for this. I apologize, Madam Chair, members of the board. Here it is. So this, we made a recommendation of deferred and adequate plans be delivered to the agency for planning review. We have it as of changing it from a five to an eight. I know that's been changed according to Mr. Drago. So, but our recommendation was for a deferral.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, so the deferral that Mr. Hampton's referring to was based on a lack of plans that we do now have. This does show the third floor with the fourth floor gone. Mr. Drago, I'm assuming that the basement unit was added it sort of as a exchange for eliminating the fourth floor. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Ehrlich. So in working on the community, because this is going to be such an extensive renovation and a condo project, they had asked that we go down rather than up and back. And we worked.
Mr. Drago is correct that the living portion of the basement unit is in the, with the topography of the plot, it is in the section where it is above grade. Most of it is above grade. So again, you know, we keep having the same thing come before us. And at least two of the plans that have come before us have designed it in such a way that the living space is where there is most light and air and adequate ceiling height. So I guess the plans are adequate.
Mr. Drago, I know that you are one of a couple of architects who walk in East Boston. Can you please get the message to your applicants that, you know, we are not specifically thrilled with basement living generally? Okay? In the meantime, is anybody here to speak and support this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tremoli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addressed most of the concerns of the Abotters, removed the four-story addition, and we look to tear the building down and reduce the numbers of units. We also received 25 letters of support from Abotters and residents of Eagle Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Master Secretary here. We have 32 letters of support.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have two raised hands. Thank you. Caller, you're on muted.
Hi, this is BPA owner at 147 Lexington, and I am in support of the project.
Thank you. Caller, you're on muted.
Madam Chair, Charlie LaGrasso, 71 Utah Street. Community member calling on support of the project. The community did push forward for us to actually push living spaces in basements. These houses are well above grade, and it makes a great use of space, specifically in our historic district of Eagle Hill. This is definitely a request of the community that we do expand spaces into there, especially when they're happening. Thank you.
No other raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm just going to go on the record in constant opposition to basement living space. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have now walked away through the agenda for 9:30. The board will take a break and will resume at 12:30. In the meantime, please, everybody who's requesting a deferral, please let Madam Ambassador know of your intentions, both for people's schedule for 12:30 and for people's schedule for 1 o'clock. Make sure you're in conversation with Ms. Ambassador. Thank you. We are now adjourned until 12:30. We are now adjourned until 12:30.
Let's go forward with the request for deferrals or withdrawals for 1230.
Any withdrawals or deferrals for 1230, address please.
Yes, this is John Barry.
Address please.
19 West Tremlett Street, BOA 1056272.
I'll take care of that, sir. For the record, calling BOA 1056272, 19 West Tremlett Street, name and address, please.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon, this is John Barry from the John D. Barry at 400 Granite, Milton, Mass. We're respectfully requesting a deferral on this project. Scheduled for December 21st.
Okay, so this is a request for a deferral, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries, the date, please?
Do you have a date of March 9th at 12:30?
Thank you, I have two more if I could request.
Just give me the address for each one first, please.
2149, 2149, 2151 Dorchester Ave.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 111-2785, 2149, 2151 Dorchester Ave, name and address, for the record, please.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Barry from the office, this is John D. Barry, on behalf of the petitioner here. We have met with, we've done a Butters meeting, we've met with the E-Board for the Lower Mills Group, they've asked us to come back on December 3rd, and after that, to make a presentation to the board, I think the, this, this project being requested for a hearing, I think was a mistake at this point in our community process.
Okay, so do you, so you're requesting a deferral, so you think it's going to go ahead in a timely fashion, then?
I do, I believe we're gonna meet with the E-Board this week, and then go in front of the Civic this month.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer, Mark.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
You have a date of March 9th, 2021, at 12:30, and what is the other address, sir?
Thank you, 11 Pacific Street.
That's not till 1 o'clock, I can't call it till 1.
Okay.
Thank you, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
I have a deferral as well.
Address, please?
3 Westford Street in Austin.
For the record, calling BOA 1085225, 3 Westford Street, name and address, for the record, please.
Greg Hemertan, 3 Westford Street.
What are you requesting, sir?
We still need some more time to go through the community and neighborhood review process as well, so we were a little premature in.
Hold on, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer, Mark.
Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
Do you have a date of March 9th, 2021, at 12:30? Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
I'm Jason, is he there?
Yes.
The address, please?
171 Newbury Street.
You're deferring?
Yes, please.
For the record, calling BOA 1056729, 171 Newbury Street. I'm sorry, I can't, that's not till 1 o'clock, it's 1 o'clock. These are for 12:30 only. Okay.
Can you just lower your hand, Jason?
These are for 12:30 only, I cannot call the 1 o'clock till 1 o'clock. Which I will do at 1 o'clock. Any deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30 only? All right, Madam Chair, I just want, the council wants me to remind everybody on the board here, in the open meeting law, that there are two projects that were scheduled for 9:30, but they were gonna be heard at 12:30, and I'm gonna call them in order and succession, so, the first one's gonna be Glen Rose, calling BOA 111-3704, 42 to 44 Glen Rose Road. Name and address, I'm sorry, this is an extended living space of an existing attic in addition of a new dormer, that violates Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories, and Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Edward Waters, hello?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, I'm the owner of 4244 Glen Rose Road, and, you know, the plans were denied, but I'd like to argue that the...
Hold on, hold on, please first, put your address on the record, and...
My address is 42 to 44 Glen Rose Road in Dorchester.
Okay, so now, just explain to us what you are proposing to do.
Basically, I am adding a dormer to existing living space, there were two bedrooms up on that third floor since the 1940s. I actually grew up up there, I've lived here my whole life, my grandfather built the house.
So, hold on, hold on, it's, so, tell us, is this a one-family or a two-family?
It's a two-family house, that's the second, that's the second and third floor that we're, the third floor we're adding the dorm to.
And what's the proposed occupancy for the third floor?
The same.
Is, so it's additional bedrooms on the third floor?
The bedrooms were already there on the third floor, I've submitted pictures of air conditioners that were built into the walls in the 80s, I grew up in the house up there.
Okay, please, just relax, just explain it to us, you know?
Yeah.
Live there, relax, just explain to us what's gonna be proposed in the attic, okay?
Basically, we're just adding a bathroom and a laundry room to the attic, to that third floor, which was existing bedrooms.
Okay, okay, so, Mr. Alec, how are the plans?
The drawings are adequate.
An adequate floor-to-ceiling height, et cetera?
Appears to be.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. The applicant notified all of us at Butters, and I believe there was one letter of support submitted from his direct to Butters.
Hi, Madam Chair, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, we'd like to also go on record in support of the applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi Georgie's office, we'd like to go on record in support of this project, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have five letters of support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Can include BPDA design review for the dormer?
Yes, Madam Chair, including BPDA resign review for the dormer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 940718, fifteen twenty-four VFW Parkway. The applicant proposes a change of occupancy and include a cannabis establishment. The applicant also proposes to modify the existing layout and conditions of the interior of the building. Violates Article 56, Section 15. The use of regulations of cannabis establishment is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Mike Ross, attorney for the applicant with a business address of One International Place. The plan here, Madam Chair, members of the board, is a medical dispensary at a building that is a multi-tenanted building on the VFW Parkway. The facility itself, and there are no buffer issues with this application as well. The building itself for the, I'm sorry, the, you can stay on that first slide if you don't mind. Will actually be in the basement area. A lift will be added where you see the square or the red, the red outline. And it will be in the lower levels. It will be, you can go to the next slide if you don't mind. It will be approximately forty-two hundred square feet, again, at the basement of this building. There are five tenant spaces, however, only three tenants are in this, this building at fifteen twenty-four VFW. And together, they share twenty-six parking spaces that are all on site. There is a separate building or attached to this building, but under a separate ownership. There is a building to the right. And there is a driveway that allows for access to the rear of the building where deliveries will occur. If you go down just a little bit further to, that's just existing conditions. You can keep going. Ambassador, if you don't mind, one more. I think the next one might be demo, and I think we'll go to the next one. Yeah, one more, please. That'll be great. Yeah, this is, this is good right here. So this is actually the floor plan. And what you have here is VFW is to your left, essentially. And so the way it will work is that you can either walk down either, either flight of stairs or if you are handicapped, a lift will be installed that you'll have access to, to go into the front of the, of the dispensary where you'll be checked in. This is a medical dispensary, so it's a little bit different than the adult dispensaries, but I know you've seen, you've seen these before as well. You'll, you'll have to be checked in at the front. And then, once verified that you are indeed a patient with a valid ID, you'll be able to enter the facility. And it's forty-three hundred square feet. It has pretty good room to handle numbers, although we do not anticipate a huge set of numbers, given the fact that it is, it is medical. The hours of operation proposed here would be 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, on the inbound side of the VFW Parkway. So at nine, at 9:00 AM, you know, you kind of missed the commute. The only way to get there is through the VFW Parkway. There's no other cut-throughs through the actual neighborhood. We were approved by the Boston Cannabis Board in September, and we entered into a host community agreement with the, with the city of Boston in October. This is a leased building. We would continue to lease it. We have a 10-year lease with the option to extend for multiple extensions. And maybe I'll pause there if that's okay.
So I know that you are the, represented the proponent on the first medical marijuana facility on Milk Street. And I noticed there were a lot of anticipated lines and numbers and demand, which actually didn't materialize. So I understand. So is, so, so are you doing this by appointment only or are you expecting walk-ins too?
Yeah, this one will not be appointment only at all. This is medical only. You know, if we ever come back here for, when we come back for adult use, we're going to have to go through that, that whole process. That's where you're seeing numbers of maybe around, I don't know, 300 a day. The medical facilities are seeing numbers closer to thirty, forty, fifty, very low numbers at, at the moment. So none, none of the medical are doing any, any kind of appointment only.
And deliveries would be through the rear?
Yep, deliveries, you do have access.
Does that grade change, right?
There is some topography on the site. It's good. There is a site plan that shows a little bit of topography there. However, there is access to the rear of the building for vehicles. And once there, you'll go into the, you can go in, go into a secure area that's not available to the public at the rear of the building on the right side of your screen there. You'd be, you'd be walking in down the set of stairs into the building and then through common space into our space to get into the secured area. And then at that point, it will be made secure by, you know, by our, by our staff.
Okay. And will you have security on, on site?
Yes, there will be security on site. You know, we, we anticipate having to ramp it up significantly if and when we're ever doing adult use. Again, with the numbers we're seeing for medical, it's just a much slower set of numbers. So, so you're not, you're not seeing the same magnitude of, of security.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are okay. Mr. Ross, the, the photograph of these things shows the steps up to the, now is the first level. Those steps, I can't, I'm looking at A21, which is the front elevation or basement elevation. So those steps will be gone, right?
The steps will remain. Mr. Ehrlich, the...
Oh. Okay.
On the right-hand side, if we can go to the elevation, Ambassador, just go up maybe two.
Yeah, those, those are the ones I'm looking at.
Yeah, what they did here, it's a little unclear, is they kind of removed the ground for you so you could see what's there. So the upper is the proposed, is the proposed condition, is the existing condition. And the lower is the proposed condition with the, with the, with the kind of the, the earth removed. So you can see that there's access on the ground floor. So they've removed the stair.
It's like a section, right?
It's a section, exactly, exactly. And that was just to show you that, you know, it's a proper height, but it's, it's subterranean.
Okay. So how, so how do you get to the lift?
The lift is on the right. I believe there's a shot of the lift, maybe if you go up one, I apologize. The lift is on the right-hand side. We can keep, so maybe we'll go down. It's probably, the lift will be installed there on that, on that right-hand side. And there's an actual drawing of the lift. If you go further down.
On A2, the lower A21 shows the lift. Will there also be stairs for someone who doesn't need lift or will everybody get in through the lift?
Oh, no. The stairs, and the stairs will actually remain on the left-hand side. So you'll be able to go in there.
Okay. All right, the drawings are okay, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. Counselor, what other businesses are located in that strip mall?
Yeah. So what you have there is you have a closed yoga studio. You have a liquor store. I think it's called Townline Liquors. It's on the upper left of, you can, actually, right there, you can stay right where we are. On the right, you have an adult services store of sorts. It's called Amazing, I believe. And then, and that's it. There used to be a mattress store in this location. And that's no longer there.
Is there more landscaping there? Just kidding.
I don't believe so.
Two more questions, Counselor, real quick. You, you mentioned at one point, if you come back for recreational use, and then you corrected yourself and said, when you come back? And then you said if again. And just, can we get some clarity on that?
Yeah. We, we're here for medical, and that's all we are here for. And I'm not trying to be cute here. I'm just, there, there is no application pending for adult use. But there was no, you know, forever ban promised either. What we promised to do to the community, to the Counselor, and, and to anyone who asked, and we have tremendous support for this application, is to apply for medical like we initially did back in, way back, I think in 2017. And, and that's what we're doing. And the only reason why I was getting into those other hypotheticals is because lately, we've been up here for adult use, and I just think the volume of security and all the other things is much higher when you're talking about adult use versus what we're proposing here.
Okay. And there was no other location on the VFW that wasn't below, below grade?
That, that's my question, I guess, Madam Chair, just to echo that, is there's plenty of commercial space up and down VFW Parkway. Seems odd to like shove this commercial below grade. And it, it just seems like an odd move.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the question. I, I guess, you know, this thing was supported by the neighborhood associations, I think in part because it didn't scream out, you know, cannabis dispensary. And I think there was some, some value in that about putting it subterranean. You know, it's a perfectly good space. The heights of the, of the, of the floor heights are adequate, are more than adequate. They're full heights. But I think not putting it really front and center has some appeal for some people. Not all the neighbors are on board with cannabis.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record support. The applicants have been in this process for about four years, and they've met with the community groups countless times. They do have letters of non-opposition from the Boston Trailer Park Association, the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, and the Charles River Spring Valley Association, you know, with the stipulation that it does remain medicinal. And that's it right now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Peter Favreto from City Councilor, Matt O'Malley's office. I'm just asking what Jack said, that, you know, the council would like to go on record in support of this application. They've gone on, you know, they've gone through an extensive community process and has received support for medical marijuana dispensary. So yeah, so just want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Miss Ambassador, is, is there a caller? Caller who has his hands raised or her hands raised?
Yes, I was just making sure no one else had anything to say. We have one caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry, I'm for the 12:30 for 152 Amden.
Okay, thank you.
All of the hands raised, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So given that information, it feels like to this petitioner only would be a wise move. So may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for approval for this petitioner only. And I'm going to include BPDA design review both for signage and for the design of the lift out front.
Okay, is there a second?
Can we put in that any type of, I mean, that parking lot's in some real rough shape, too.
I know. The problem is, this is just, this is the applicant and not the property owner. Because we see this all up and down the VFW and essentially Dorchester Ave, too. So, yeah. I, Mr. Ross, what's the likelihood we'll see some action on that?
Well, one thing we could do is, we are getting, the only thing our lease is specific on are two handicap parking spaces. We, our plan is to locate them right next to the lift. We could stripe those and clean them up, and at least there would be an improvement on those two spaces that we do have control over. We'd, we'd be happy to offer that.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table that's a second. Was there a second?
Mr. Ehrlich, this is Jeff.
Yeah.
Could you ask not only to this applicant only, but for medicinal use only?
Well, because the application is only for medicinal use. So if they come back, they come back. Is there...
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So we understand clearly that today it's for medicinal use.
All right, it's fine with me to have it in the motion if, if...
Actually, I, what I don't want to have happen then is make it an absolute for them that they couldn't at some point get into recreational marijuana. Because I...
Let's leave it at it. You're right. The, the application is for medicinal use only, so that covers that.
Okay, was there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Jane Pennato.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ligris opposed. Ligris opposed, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe, and Joe opposes.
So that's two oppositions. There's five in support, some motion carries.
Following the next case. Following BOA 104946082 Winthrop Street. This is a change of occupancy from three dwelling units to four dwelling units. Expand living space in the basement. Violation of Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking loading. Article 50, Section 28, a four-family usage forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 50, Section 29, usable open spaces insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Coach Ligris, I'll be recusing myself. Mr. Secretary, please note.
Thank you.
John Moran, you have to unmute.
He keeps muting himself.
Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way. We are here today seeking a change of use from a three-unit dwelling to a four-unit dwelling expansion into the basement, which requires a variance. There's two additional dimensional violations. FAR is excessive. The code allows for .8. The existing FAR is .98, and the proposed FAR would be 1.25. And open spaces insufficient. There is a yard of way to the rear of the property, which occupies open space, which does not contribute to the open space. And there is access for one off-street parking. We are not seeking relief from the one parking space required. What is proposed is a fourth unit, which will contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms with access from the front entryway and egress to the rear. The existing three units, the first floor level has two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The second and third floor levels have three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The proponent undertook extensive outreach and has support letters from 23 residents in the area, including an immediate at Butters at 80 Winthrop Street.
So, so Mr. Moran, was this addressed before this board in the past?
No, Madam Chair.
It's not been before this board at all, at all, as far as checking on the jacket?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, all I was, all I was given, maybe there are more plans than this, is a, a floor plan. There's no elevation. It doesn't show what the floor-to-ceiling height is. It doesn't show what the relationship is to grade. And as I look at the Google Maps, it looks to me like it is, the majority of the unit is below grade. But I can't tell because there are no elevations. I would say they're not adequate.
Madam Chair, if I can address that, this was...
Yes, please answer as many of those questions as possible.
Yes. Yeah, the front of the building will require a, a dig-out. The rear is at grade. The elevation is eight feet. The rear is at grade, the elevation is eight feet in the basement. This was originally filed as an amendment which was incorrect, you cannot change occupancy by amending an existing application, alt-application. The plans for the original alt-application did not follow with the change in filing of this alt. The plans are being screened and show the existing condition. There will require, there will be required for the bedrooms facing the street that there would be a digout similar to the adjoining building at 80.
So what I'm seeing on the screen now is not what I got an opportunity to preview. Colette, are there elevations in there?
There is an elevation at three.
Don't sound on this one, but let me go back.
S3?
Okay, S3, okay, thank you.
When you say digout, do you just mean a window well, or what do you mean?
Well, that would be a part of the landscaping, either a window well or a terrace. There is sufficient space in the front yard to have a step-down and have a terrace.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, when you say either a window well or a step-down terrace, I mean, how can we approve something that is not determined?
There will be a window well.
Okay, this is what's, we now have a section, that's the first one we've seen, or at least the first one I've seen. The floor, basement floor to grade height in the front.
It is approximately four feet.
Is the, yeah, so you would need window well because that's too, that's too, too high for an egress window.
Right, well, the window would start at 42 inches, which basically three feet. The window well would be approximately two feet to get to grade.
Okay, so is 80 and 82, are they in common ownership?
No, separate. 80 is a condominium, not in condominium ownership, this is proposed as rentals.
Okay, so you were referring to the window wells at 80, right?
Yes.
I don't, I'm looking at the front, and I just see screening in front of those windows, I do not see window wells.
There is habitation in the lower level.
Okay, so any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a Butters meeting on August 11, 2020. During the meeting, neighbors expressed concerns about increased parking issues and the fact that adding a fourth unit will set a negative precedence. Inversely, our office did receive 23 letters of support for the project from the Butters who believe adding a fourth unit will provide quality rental housing, so we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Jessica, what state is this building in? I mean, I look at it from the exterior and it looks like, I don't know, can you tell me what's happening in this building?
I don't have a lot of information on the inside of it. I know that the outside, the exterior is consistent with a lot of the homes on the street, the brownstones, so...
Okay, okay. Anybody else to either speak in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Samuel Hurtado, here from the Office of City Council President Kim Janey. We have received only letters in opposition, and also concerns about this applicant who owns all the properties in the area, and they think he's kind of an absentee landlord. So President Janey would like to go in opposition of this project, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Council and East West Abbey George's office. And also because of what Sam said from Council President's office, we've received multiple emails in opposition, and we want to go on record in opposition, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have 23 letters of support and 13 letters of opposition, and the opposition's basically no extended living in the basement and obviously density.
Okay, may I hear from Michael Winston and then Lorraine Payne, please?
Michael, you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Hello, this is Michael Winston, homeowner and applicant relating to 88 and 92 Lambert. And given community request, we are deferring, this is our second deferral.
Michael, Michael, hold on a minute, please, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to give testimony on 82 Winthrop Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry, wait.
So hold on, hold on.
Lorraine, I remember, please? Lorraine, unmuted.
Hi, this is Lorraine Payne Wheeler, and I'm calling on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. My address is 85 Moreland Street, and the Neighborhood Association is Roxbury Path Forward. And we attended the Butters meeting, and we also, they were kind enough to attend a Neighborhood Association meeting. And there was no support for this project. Now, I would say that he does own other properties in the neighborhood, perhaps his tenant signed something. But we submitted to the board, and you can look at, you can see the addresses, the people who live close, the people who live next door at 80 Winthrop Street, the person that owns another one of those brownstones in that row at 88 Winthrop Street, they are opposed, and they're the people that are going to be impacted.
So, Lorraine, please hold on for a minute, give us the reason for the opposition?
Well, for starters, all of the brownstones in that row are three families. And so he is asking to put three bedrooms in the basement. And already, in terms of renovating the floors above, somehow he's managed to get three bedrooms, because that's what the renovation is. They oftentimes change a dining room into a bedroom, for example. And that's fine, those upper-level units are not part of this discussion. But then, on top of that, to add three more bedrooms into the basement is just excessive. And it doesn't meet the zoning code, and we would just ask the board to look at the actual neighbors. I'd be happy to look at those letters later. And the other issue is this, how many bedrooms did he now say, three, six, eight? And then three in the basement is 11, and 11 people are going to park behind that building? I don't think so. And so the other issue is, we sent a copy, a photo to the ISD ambassador, the existing rear of the property just yesterday, it's a mess back there. And so when we express that there are some concerns about this owner, he is giving you sort of a view of what that looks like. And so we just respectfully, he's a part of the neighborhood, he can run his apartment building, but I really think that we must ask for him not to add those bedrooms in the basement, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and can I say something else? There's another abutter that's on this call, his name is Tom. So I would ask that you call on him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I hear from caller user number 18 and then 20?
Caller, you're unmuted.
Good morning, Madam Chair, well, good morning to the zone members, boarding zone members. My name is Walter Reed, I am the owner of 88 Winthrop Street. I currently have the other driveway that I indebted to that all the buildings between 88 to 80 utilize for access. There have been a number of construction vehicles and dumpsters accessing 80 and 82 Winthrop Street across my property, which is private, and I've had some damage done to a banister on my stairwell, which I've had to...
So, Mr. Reed, just let me ask you one question. What is, what is your, what is your opposition based on for the change of use from a three to a four family?
Inadequate square footage for the proposed build-out. I believe the floor to ceiling height is inadequate. I have issues with abandoned cars and inadequate parking spaces, insufficient parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Can I get caller user number 20, please?
I'm still waiting for 152 Lambert.
Okay, how about Tom and Jerry, I cannot see their last name. Can we hear from them, please?
Hi, Tom, you're unmuted.
Yes, hi, my name is Tom Carroll, I am a owner-occupant at 80 Winthrop Street. Similar to the reasons that Mr. Reed laid out for opposing, it does come down to not meeting the proper square footage, which could lead and will lead to possibly some safety and security concerns in the parking lot. Our property does have a history of break-ins, thefts, abandoned vehicles, squatters, drug use, and narrow access with vehicles. Units being leased as opposed to them being occupied might lead to increased density. And throughout this project, my wife and myself have seen firsthand a lot of neglect into the management of this project, that's led to tremendous amount of waste, it's led to rats, it's led to an uneasy feeling of someone being able to manage a property of renters as opposed to, you know...
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more question, Violet Birch.
Okay, thank you, let's listen to her and then we'll move on.
Ms. Birch? Ms. Birch?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record, please.
Okay, so my name is Violet Birch, and I live at 80 Winthrop Street, and I'm in Unit 1.
And tell us, are you in support or opposition?
I am in opposition, and all of the reasons that the other Butters have stated is exactly the reason or are the reasons that I oppose this variance. Density, parking, and, you know, it really disturbs me that rather than selling the units, we have tenants coming in, I mean, it's, I'm just, I'm really emotional about this.
Okay, thank you, so...
It's very disturbing that rather than there being more homeowners in this community, it's all about money for the developers.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Moran, you've heard the comments from the Butters. Can you tell us who the property owner is, because I know you're listed as the applicant? Who is the property owner?
He is Amid, he owns several properties in Roxbury, he does have a good reputation.
What's the company name?
I don't know the company, he is listening, if he, I don't know if he can be unmuted.
No, so did you say Amid?
Amid, A-M-I-D.
Oh, A-M-I-D, okay, cool, thank you. So I think... So, hold on, go ahead.
This particular property was in substantial disrepair. Due to COVID, the rehabilitation has been delayed. There are abandoned cars, and one abandoned car to the rear when the property was acquired. The owner was identified, the landscaping in rear will be leveled and cleaned. Access is by the right-of-way curb cut at 80. The third unit owner at 80 is recorded in support.
Okay, hold on, Mr. Moran, so what I do want to do is, we've heard from a lot of Butters about the life on the ground, and it feels to me like the applicant needs to prove his intent by maintaining and upgrading the quality before anything else happens. And that's what it sounds like to me, so can I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for denial, Mark.
Second, drop.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, right now it's 1:14, I'm going to call the 1 o'clock cases for rediscussion. For any deferrals or withdrawals, if you could just give me the address first before you start speaking.
DA Geneva Street.
For the record, BOA 1067375, 28 Geneva Street, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Tuscana with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Are seeking a deferral, we had come before the board and saw...
Good thing.
Hello?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, I'm sorry, we did seek a deferral back in September, and in that time, we've taken a floor off the structure and reduced our unit count from 24 to 19. However, we're just waiting for a public meeting, and due to COVID, things were backed up and delayed, but we have a tentative date in December, and then we'll be ready to move forward to the board.
Okay, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion for deferral, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The date of March 9 at 1 o'clock.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes, 11 Pacific Street.
For the record, for the record, calling BOA 993501, 11 Pacific Street, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is John Barry with the Law Office of John D. Barry at 400 Granite Ave in Milton, Massachusetts. This particular project did defer in September, we've received today's date. We have been working with Haley Dillon from ONS on the need for some changes to the drawings in order to schedule a new Butters meeting. There was a meeting with the Butters that had some concerns about the project. We now have the changes in mind that can be made and then presented to ONS in order for that second Butters meeting. We do expect to be able to get this done with one deferral, one more deferral.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral, Secretary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
They'll have a date of March 9 at 12:30. If Mr. Drago is still online, that I gave you 1 o'clock, it's going to be 12:30.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary.
So it'll be 3:09, 12:30 now.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, members of the board.
Well, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
88 Lambert Avenue.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 1078073, 92 to 92 C Lambert Avenue, there's a companion case. BOA 1078077, 92R, 92R C Lambert Avenue, name and address for the record, please.
Michael Winston, 88 Lambert Avenue. I'm the resident homeowner and developer, and we...
Mr. Winston, tell us how long, how long a deferral you would need, because I know you guys, I remember your attorney was here the last time requesting the deferral. It sounds to me that you still have a little ways to go on this.
Yeah, we are, we are at the verge of a really incredible agreement with the community around how to honor Henry's legacy, and we are scheduling meetings for January. We would, we would not need longer than February. So if a date in March would be fine for us, we don't need significant more time. We were ready to appear today, but we wanted to give the community a little more time to, to just, you know, respect our neighbors.
So, please, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral, Secretary.
Second, Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I, go ahead, may I just have Kyle Hall, who sent me an email privately, can you please send that, post that publicly, because I think other people need to see that. Please do not send me any private messages if you want anything on the record or any support, technical support. Sorry, what was the date again? Sorry, what was the date again on that?
Okay, we're going to have a date of March 9th at 12:30.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's one more deferral, address, please.
Mr. Fortune, 16th and 18th Pravel, there are two cases and they're related.
Okay, very good, I'm going to call the case BOA 109-2866, 16 Pravel Street. There's a companion case BOA 109-8228, 18 Pravel Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members. My name is George Marancio, an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, you may recall that this matter was deferred several weeks ago. There was a question as to whether two existing head houses had been, A, approved by this board, B, approved by the BPDA in Design Review, and C, ultimately approved by the Inspection Services Department. I'm withdrawing both of these matters today and unfortunately, I have to report that the head houses were not approved. They were constructed four to five years ago on each of these two buildings. And my clients make no excuses. Again, their subcontractors did the work, but they take full responsibility for this error in this oversight. My clients are not going to seek to get, try to obtain relief to approve these. They are in fact already hired a subcontractor to remove both head houses. The reason why they haven't been done yet is because obviously, they need the correct hatch in each instance to replace the gap in each of the roofs and those hatches are backordered. They're going to take approximately two weeks to come in. So, I'm going to withdraw both applications and, you know, we will follow, I will follow up diligently with ISD and let them know, in fact, provide proof once both of these head houses have been removed.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice, the Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I believe there was one more case, is Newbury Street on, 171 Newbury?
Yeah, Jason.
Are you still deferring, sir?
Yes, please.
All right, for the record, calling BOA 105-691-171 Newbury Street.
It doesn't work.
Name and address for the record, please.
Jason, 171 Newbury Street.
So, tell us what you're proposing to do?
I am just looking to possibly defer this.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion for deferral, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You got the last date of March 9th at 12:30.
Hi, Mr. Clark, William Thompson, I'm not sure if you're trying to defer. I'm not sure what you're saying, do you mind if I unmute?
Sure, Madam Ambassador.
Thank you.
Hi, I just sent a note because I was on the docket for the 12:30.
Last fucking meeting, March 9th. I get my signal from March 9th.
Hello?
Are you going ahead with your project today?
Yes.
Okay, so, hold on, we haven't gotten to you yet, so sit tight, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else for 1 o'clock deferrals? I believe we have everybody. Madam Chair, I believe we're all set for 1 o'clock unless there's someone else out there for 1 o'clock deferral over Charles.
So, let's chug along with our 12:30s.
All right, going back to Hampton Street, I'm going to call case BOA 107-1445, 152 Hampton Street. There's a companion case BOA 107-1418, 152 Hampton Street. This is a minor renovation and increase the occupancy of the building to the lower level bar and taproom from 120 to 180 persons. The violation is Article 50, Section 32, the bar use is conditional. Article 50, Section 32, including in a Section 50-31 Performance Standards, Proposed Outdoor Seating. This is for 152 Hampton. The change of option to include live entertainment operating before and after 10:30 PM to an existing brewery and bar taproom, no work to be done. The violation is Article 50, Section 32. Use of a brewery with bar and live entertainment operating at 10:30 PM is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members. It's Stephen Miller, McDermott Quirting Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. We're seeking approval on a previously approved brewery and taproom with outdoor seating that was previously approved to expand the space and also to put in live entertainment. As the board is aware from previous hearings, Mr. Michael Feldman is also available as a panelist on this. As the board is aware, Mr. Feldman has his offices, has totally renovated this building and has brought in a brewery tenant. The first tenant, even pre-COVID, was unable to make it at this location and they have a new tenant that is seeking to expand the occupancy and also provide live entertainment. As part of this process, these are both conditional uses. As part of this process, you should have letters of support.
So, Mr. Miller, so, this is a two-part proposal. One is for live entertainment and I'm assuming that live entertainment will also be shared with the outdoor seating capacity, right?
There would be some live entertainment outside, Madam Chair, that's correct.
And so, how many seats are outdoors?
Well, there's 100 seats outdoors. There's one area on the floor plan. You can see that the only place that they could have outdoor seating because there is seating along the building and seating on the other side. So, there would be outdoor seating, they'd probably have to take at least one of the tables out. So, it would be approximately 48 seats where there could be light entertainment.
So, outdoor seating is 100 seats. On the indoor and the indoor occupancy, you're proposing to increase from 120 to 180, right?
The total occupancy for 100 outside and 80 inside, Madam Chair.
Oh, I see, the complete occupancy is 180 total.
That would be correct.
Okay, okay. Now, tell me how parking is supposed to work?
There is no parking and I'd just like to address that as part of my presentation. This property has been totally renovated. There has been a significant process with the people in the area. You have letters of support, not only from both of the proposals from the.
Mr. Miller, I'm asking you a technical question about parking and how is parking supposed to work? Because we know across the street, there's Orchard Gardens and we want to make sure the residents there aren't significantly impacted.
But, Madam Chair, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
You have the head of the Orchard Gardens Residents Association waiting to testify in support of this and the not only Orchard Park Residents Association, but the New Market Association and the Orchard Gardens Pilot School. If I could finish, Madam Chair. I want a neighborhood location that provides these types of place to go and they're overwhelmingly in support. We anticipate that a large majority of the people that would come here are going to be from the area and we anticipate that most of them would be walking. As part of the process, there was never an issue brought up by any, whether it's New Market or the Pilot School or the Residents Association of the parking. So.
However, however, as the board, as the board people, we are asking, tell us about random people who might want to come here just like people come to Dorchester Ave, to the brewing there. Tell us how you're anticipating that's going to happen. Mr. Feldman, maybe you have some information to offer?
Well, before, Mr. Feldman, Madam Chair, we would anticipate that a large portion of the people that would be coming there would be coming there after people are out of work and also on the weekends and there is significant on-street parking in that area. And Mr. Feldman can address the parking better than I can for St. Pierre's offices.
Just briefly, the parking lot we have on-site accommodates 24 cars. When the outdoor seating is set up the way that is, we lose about three spots. So, we would be left with about 21 cars parking on the site.
And Michael, how about on-street parking?
Yeah, the on-street parking, because it's an industrial area. On the work days, there's some people parking on the street and then 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, everyone leaves and all of George Street is open. And I'll bet Val or Sue could comment on that, too. So, there is street parking. The way the last brewery worked was two people came in cars, but a lot of people came via Uber, Lyft, and other ways, so they didn't have a parking issue.
That is what I was asking, thank you for getting to the point.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
No problem. Is, how are the plans, Mr. Earl?
It's just a floor plan and there's no work to be done, so the plans are fine.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and the butters meeting was held on October 14th, 2020. This project was heavily supported by the butters as well as the Orchard Gardens United Neighborhood Association. We believe the proposal will bring positive foot traffic to the area. Mr. Feldman has also been an excellent community partner to residents, so we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we only have one letter of support.
We did send in two letters from Orchard Gardens and I believe the president of Orchard Gardens is the one who's been trying to speak, but.
You can put those in the file, Mr. Miller, if they're sent in to us.
I will get those in for the Residents Association, the New Market Business Association, and the Pilot School, Orchard Gardens Pilot School. And hopefully, Val is still, hopefully, we haven't lost her.
Madam Chair, I do have someone from Kim Jenkins' office that wanted to speak.
Is that Sam? But please, yes, go ahead.
Sam is actually not available. My name is Dev, I'm new to the office.
Oh, yes, welcome.
Thank you so much, yeah, we wanted to speak in favor of the motion and, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. May I have here from caller user number 27?
Caller, you're on muted. Caller, you're on muted.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Muted, but I'm waiting to testify for another proposal.
Are you not here for 152 Hampton?
No.
Okay, so.
Another one.
Okay, okay, so, hold on. Sue Sullivan, can you go ahead, please?
Yes, just Sue Sullivan, Executive Director, New Market Businesses Association. We are in full support of this. As Mr. Feldman said, we are comfortable with the parking, the on-street parking after hours and the 20 spaces, so on, on-site. And Mr. Feldman has proven to be a good community partner and we're pleased that he's trying to reinvigorate that area with the retail establishment.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at large, Michael Flaherty, Council to go record support.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from Christine, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes, this is Christine Fideli. I'm a resident at 14 Dunmore Street, right from the brewery and I am for this project. Michael's been a fantastic neighbor and the last brewery, we had no problems at all with parking. It was 100%, everybody took an Uber, so I'm 100% for it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think Val Shelley was out there somewhere, the president of the Orchard Gardens Residents Association.
We have spoken to her for it since we do not see her here.
What's her name?
Do you see Val, Miss Ambassador?
I do not see a Val.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Or is that caller 20, I don't think we heard from her.
I think that's caller 20.
I think both caller 20 and 27 were here for other projects, but caller 20?
Hello?
Are you here for 152 Hampton Street?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please, put your name and press on the record and tell us if you're in support or in opposition of the project.
My name is Valerie Shelley, I'm the president of the Orchard Gardens Residents Association. I'm also a resident at the Orchard Gardens Development and we are in support of this project. Michael Feldman has been supportive to our residents and our community since he's come on board. He also has lightened up Hampton Street, so it's visible for our residents to walk.
Thank you. Okay, so, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Just to approve for this applicant only.
Got a motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Michael, if you could only bring some kind of activity to Newbyan Square.
You cut out Christine, could you repeat that?
I'm saying if you could only bring some activity like that to Newbyan Square. I have the market analysis on our website that shows that there's a demand for this in the square.
It's good to hear.
Just to leave you with that thought.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 108-7759, 541 Massachusetts Avenue. This is a change of option of a lodging house and church to five residential units and renovate. The violation is Article 50, Section 26. Establish a residential sub-districts and maximum number of dwelling units in a row or townhouse shall be four. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago &amp; Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of 541 Mass Ave. While you're with me is John Burns, the owner of the property, and Arthur Chu, the project architect. One quick point of clarification from what was written to the record, we're seeking occupancy to five condominium units, not seven. We're still looking to renovate the building and install a full sprinkler system, but only proposing five units.
So, how does.
That's what it says, just so the record, I read in five, not seven?
Apologies, Secretary.
So, tell us, has that changed your violations in any way?
So, it has eliminated our open space violation. We now meet 200 square feet per unit and it reduced the additional lot area for dwelling units and parking requirements, although it did not eliminate them.
Okay, so, please go ahead, tell us what's being proposed.
Sure, so currently, the property has a legal occupancy of a lodging house and church. The church has been used more recently with the lower levels operating as a kitchen, church function hall, and service area. And then the upper floors have been residences for the family with the church and also the additional lodgers when it was applicable. So, we're seeking to change that to five condominium units. Each of the levels would contain one unit with one three-bedroom unit and four two-bedroom units with an average size of 1,289 square feet. The zoning violations, as mentioned, this is a rowhouse district, so MFR is allowed up to four units. We are seeking five units, so we can use variance. As you can see from the picture on the screen, this is in the middle of a section of rowhouses along Mass Ave and most of these buildings contain anywhere between three and 10 residential units. So, we are seeking that one extra fifth unit, although we think it is consistent and work with the. although we think it is consistent and work with the community to come up with that number, whereas we started at seven, as I mentioned. Uh, the second violation is additional lot area per additional dwelling unit. We need 2,000 per additional dwelling unit and we have 500. The FAR allowed is 1.0. We're proposing a 2.7. Uh, we're not proposing any changes to the structure, so all that 2.7 is pre-existing. We're just changing, as I mentioned, from church service areas and function halls into, uh, living spaces. The rear yard, here last one feet, we're proposing 16. Again, this is pre-existing. We're just building a rear deck, which goes up and covers an existing right now on the second story. So that's not changing anymore. We're just making that more functional rather than dead space. And finally, parking, you're required to have one space per dwelling unit. Obviously, this served, as I mentioned, as a church, so there were cars coming and going on certain days, uh, but no place for parking, so we'd require five spaces and we have zero.
Okay.
Sorry.
So tell us, um, where you're creating that additional unit? Is that what they're looking at as the proposed lower-level floor plan?
Correct, Madam Chair, yes. There'll be one unit per floor. So the lower level, uh, as you can see maybe in the initial photos where there's, um, kind of that traditional dig-out in the front, so there's steps down. So there's a full walkout in the front and the rear. In the rear, there's that kind of courtyard patio area. In the front, uh, is in that dugout already existing area. So there are steps down and then a direct entrance, a full walk, walk-in on the front as well as a walkout on the back. This would be our largest unit. It is three bedrooms, uh, with an office and a den. So this is almost 2,000 square feet. And then as you move up, the first floor is similar, although slightly smaller. 1,700 square foot, two-bedroom with an office. And then floors two, three and four are all essentially identical at 907 square feet for units three and four and 850 for unit five. Those three would be two-bed, uh, two-bath as well.
Okay, so am I seeing rear decks?
You are, Madam Chair. There's a existing rear deck on kind of the lower level and then there'd be one larger deck, uh, coming off unit three. The upper levels, uh, floor three and four will not have any decks. They have existing fire escapes and, and part of our work with the community was to. All the way up because they wanted to keep it consistent with some of the other, uh, structures that we're all with.
So tell us the dimensions of that rear deck.
So the deck you're looking at right now is.
Sorry, at unit three?
Correct. Yes. That deck would be 21 feet 9 inches by 25 feet 2 inches. And again, that, that's kind of all existing roof space over the lower level. The existing conditions plan shows that it's kind of dead space now, so that would be proposed to be a deck and kind of just infill that roof space as-is, but not really change the structure.
And, and that those fire extinguishers are not, uh, fire escape spaces are not meant to be decks in any way?
That's correct, Madam Chair. At one point they were, but working with the community, they wanted those eliminated, so we're just going to keep the fires as-is.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Um, uh, well, a little incomplete in terms of information. There's the front elevation inside and the rear elevation, no side elevation, so it's a little hard to understand the relationship of the lower-level units, um, to the, uh, to the grade. It looks like they're at grade in the rear and, um, and I guess there's, uh, you know, there's a step down in the front. It's a little bit hard to tell.
And that's correct, Mr. Ehrlich, and the best way maybe to conceptualize the, the front elevation would, would actually be the site pictures. You can see, uh, how it has that kind of traditional walk-down and then a separate entrance to the left and you can kind of see the windows in relation to it. Madam Ambassador, I don't know if you can go back up to one of the first couple of site pictures, but that might be a better illustration, just to kind of get an idea of the grade. There's that, uh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, sorry, a little further back up. There's more of an aerial view that shows you. Uh, one more perhaps. Yeah, so it's not the best picture here, but you can see how there's that, uh, that gate to the right of the steps with a couple, uh, steps down. You can see the.
Okay.
As existing would be direct asset, access from the front. There's a little kind of, it, uh, it's not quite a courtyard. It's not that big, but there's some planters and kind of a landing down there. Presents the front elevation.
All right, uh, so I, I mean, that, uh, so, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Be 96.
Okay, all right. Uh, the, the drawings are adequate, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Um, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kim Crucilli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal on August 26th, 2020, and a Butters meeting was held. Our neighbors heard from applicants related to seven residential units. In general, there were no major concerns. The applicants had several meetings with the Chester Square Civic Association, where the number of units was raised to. Uh, the applicants amended their proposal to five units, which is in line with civic support. Uh, we've received letters of support from Chester Square and Director Butters for the five-unit project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here.
From President Janey's office, um, President Janey would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. We have received a letter of support from the Chester Square Neighborhood Association.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have two letters of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands. Caller, you're on muted. Caller? Um, Sue Sullivan has her hand raised, but, uh, something must be going on with her audio, Madam Chair.
No, she's, uh, this shouldn't be in husband. A little bit beyond. So she might be raised just by mistake.
Okay, thank you. Um, caller 27 didn't answer.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, Secretary?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1096278220 West Springfield Street. This is remove the existing wood deck at the second floor and install new metal deck. Install new metal deck at the first floor, install a metal spiral staircase in the ground to the second floor. The violation is Article 64.9.4, townhouse row extension into the raft. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Dupec. I live at 220 West Springfield Street. Uh, I am an owner occupant of this residence. There are other, uh, there are three other residents. There's a unit two, a unit three and a unit four, um, at this location. Uh, I must apologize first off and say that, um, all of these other meetings that I've been a part of, I've been able to share my screen and so I did have a presentation for you, but I'll, I'll fly a little blind and fly a little solo here, so.
How about you use your time just to explain to us what's being proposed? We're kind of interested in the dimensions of the metal deck and, um, what, what kind of metal it is.
Sure. Um, I, I mean, this is, I'm not, I'm not an architect by, by trade at all, but, um, it's, this is the typical metal deck that you see throughout the South End. Um, it's on the back of the building. One of the kind of misconceptions that we have right now is on our first level floor framing plan, which is the top page of, of the presentation that you're looking at. It's kind of a top-down view. Um, we have that, we have a platform on that. It's being called the deck and I understand why it's being called the deck. So it's, it's that, uh, figure on the left-hand side. Um, I understand why it's being called the deck. We're not, we're not proposing that it be used as a deck. We're being, we're called, we're proposing that it be used simply as egress to access the ground in case of emergency, in case of a fire. One of the reasons.
What is the dimension of that?
Uh, it is seven feet wide by nine feet long, extending off the back of the building.
Okay. So hold on, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Um, Jeff, any comments on this?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, no.
No, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Um, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kim Crucilli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal with a proviso that approval is only granted for a fire escape and not real back, uh, balconies or a deck. On October 5th, 2020, applicants met with the Paramount Civic Association. No major concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna, you on?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay.
Madam Chair, there's no raised hands.
Madam Chair, the Secretary here, we have one letter of support.
Okay.
I also have two additional letters of support. One from Director Butter, uh, David Goldman at 566, who is the new owner of that property, and also one from 216 Juan Guillermo, um, that is, and his wife.
Okay. Um, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve. Uh, Jeff, do you want to design review on this?
Oh, we don't need it on this one. No, thank you.
But, but we should, uh, we should use the proviso from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services that this, this is a fire escape only and not a proposed deck. Um, yes. Okay. So, um, is that part of the motion, Mark? Was that you who made the motion?
Um, well, I mean, it's actually a little more than a fire escape, but down to the ground level, it's, uh, um.
Would you like me to do the design review just so that we minimize it so that it is a fire escape?
Yeah.
That it doesn't give the appearance and.
Can I just offer a point of clarity really quick?
No, no, hold on. Um, so, um.
I can do that if you'd like.
That's fine. That would be good.
Right.
Is there a second?
Yes, second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries without proviso.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 111257462 Hutchings Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. Renovate basement, rework stairs, install and do all finish work. Violation Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Afternoon, my name is William Thompson. My address is 2 Woodland Road in Jamaica Plain.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So, I'm, good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm proposing to, um, add a basement apartment in a two-family building that I owned for, um, nine years. And, um, the apartment will be a studio apartment. The entire apartment will be below grade. I mean, it will have an egress window and a, um, um, a walkout with, um, and you'd walk out the building with stairs, um, a retaining wall and stairs up, um, to, to, um, access the outside. And there's also another, um, entrance, means of egress, um, through the, um, corner of the, um, of the basement. And let's see. And so we're, as part of the project, we plan to sprinkler the entire building as required. And, um, and that's, that's the gist of it.
Okay. Um, tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is in that space?
Sure, that, that particular, um, building has pretty good floor-to-ceiling height. It's around, it's between, um, 92, it's around 92 inches, between 90 and 92 throughout the basement.
Okay. And, um, let's see, and are, is the utility space from the, um, from the unit access to it?
Um, can you repeat the question? Does the utility space, do you mean the utility rooms where?
Yes.
There'll be utility rooms adjacent to the unit and, um, um, it would be accessible if you walk outside of the apartment. You would not, it's not accessible from inside the apartment. You have to walk outside. And I usually keep the utility room secured.
Okay. Um, let me just see, so, um, your, your house is the one with the little pink flamingos in the front yard?
Uh, I'm not sure if they're pink flamingos, no. It's, it's, it's a gray house.
At some point, they had pink, little pink flamingos. Okay, very pretty.
Very stately, effective-looking, um, gray house. We've done a lot of renovation to, to the home. We bought it in 2010 and put a lot of money in and we currently, um, rent those units out. We're not owner occupants. We, um, but we try to keep our, our, um, we just try to keep very invested in the neighborhood and our rent's reasonable. I am proud to say that three of the, of our occupant, former resident, tenants have moved on to homeownership because of the way we've structured things, so, um, you know, we're, uh, we're, we're responsible landlords.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Um, well, this is again, uh, another below-grade, uh, basement turned into a, a living space, so. You know, technically they're adequate. I just don't know if that's what we want to keep improving.
Yep, okay. Um, any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held our Butters meeting on September 29th, 2020 and did hear from residents who supported the owner, um, who has been a long-term member of the community. However, I did receive, uh, one letter of opposition from a neighbor, uh, who believed, who believes the additional unit will not fit with the existing homes on the street. Um, given the fact that there is a mix of multifamily units in the area, we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Madam Chair, there's no raised hands.
Okay. Um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Wait, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, rigorous.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed.
I too am opposed, but motion carries.
Calling a next case.
You're all set, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 106891830 Copeland Street. This is a full interior exterior renovation. Constructed three-story addition with decks, extend living space into the basement, area for unit one. The violation is Article 50, Section 29, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Three stories is the max. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent, uh, Harion Carbonara, who is the owner, uh, of the property. Madam Chair, members, this is an, an existing, uh, three-family dwelling uh, in a 3F4,000 zoning sub-district, uh, in the Roxbury Neighborhood District. Uh, Madam Chair, my client was proceeding with what he believed to be a zoning compliant, full interior renovation of the building as well as the addition of a three-story rear addition, an infill addition of, uh, dimensions of approximately seven feet by 16 feet. Uh, he was issued a refusal letter, uh, in March for a violation attributable to, uh, um, excessive story height. Uh, I believe honestly that, uh, that the zoning refusal letter is an error. Uh, however, my client, uh, elected to appeal the refusal and to, uh, seek, uh, seek the, uh, the required variance from the board. Uh, Madam Chair, members, there, this is a building, uh, there was three dwelling units. It's remaining three dwelling units. Uh, there was, uh, living space in the basement of the building at the time my client purchased it. Uh, at that time, there was a bedroom, a laundry utility room and a bathroom. Under, under the proposed renovation, uh, there would again remain three units. The first unit, uh, would remain as is 200, uh, 750 square foot, approximately two-bedroom. Uh, unit two would be approximately 700 square foot, one-bedroom. Uh, and then, um, that would be units two and three, I'm sorry. And then unit one, which is the bi-level unit, uh, would be a one-bedroom, uh, plus it's approximately 1,200 square. it's approximately 1,200 square feet. Uh, the building is a three-story building. I believe that because of the three-story vertical addition, uh, in the partially exposed basement, that the examiner, uh, elected to construe this as a four-story building. That's what the violation is for, exceeding the maximum number of stories. Uh, but it's clearly a three-story building. Uh, to answer some questions that I know may be coming, uh, the ceiling height in the basement is, uh, eight feet. Uh, in the basement, uh, would be, um, uh, under the proposed plan, there's currently one-bedroom there. Uh, there would be two bedrooms in the basement, one with an en suite bath. Um, I have a, uh, and, and, um, with escape windows, uh, from the bedrooms, that would be to, uh, a dugout, uh, what, what the board has been seeing described as an area way. This would be fully excavated, uh, with, um, uh, you know, uh, stairs up from the area, uh, leading from the, uh, from the windows. No violations attributable to any of this work. As I said, the only violation that was cited is a violation on story height.
Right. So I'm looking at Google Maps. This is an attached building. Does this owner own the, a budding property at 28 Copeland?
Uh, um, I was going to say no, but I'll say not to my knowledge. I, I believe that the answer is no, he does not.
Okay. And who is the owner of this property?
Uh, Harion Carbonara.
Okay. Okay, and, um, this wasn't before this board on prior, what was it?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair. My client purchased the building in, uh, you know, when it was in a pronounced state of disrepair fairly, I, this honestly, I, I have to say, this, I don't want to use the expression landed in my lap, but I really had nothing to do with this until about a week ago. Uh, this is a client I've represented in the past, and he asked me to represent him at the hearing after he explained what happened. So I don't know much about the history, uh, but my, my understanding and belief is that he purchased the building. Uh, I think if you're looking at the Google Street View, uh, it was in a pronounced state of disrepair, and he's been proceeding, as I said, with what he believed to be a zoning compliant renovation, but for the issuance of this refusal letter.
So I know, it looks like it abuts the, the playground. What, what is the addition? I cannot tell from these drawings. So the addition is only in the basement plan? No, it's, it's, uh, it's three stor, it's two stories, is it?
Yeah, it's a three-story addition, and it says, the plan that's showing now, uh, on, on the screen, uh, that's the existing, uh, shows the, the outdated, uh, fire escape system. I forgot to mention, there would be a new, uh, rear egress system as part of this. Again, that's zoning compliant, uh, which is why the plans of the board, he's now saying, say former fire escape.
Hold, hold on, uh, Mr. Maransy. Colette, can you please show the proposed, the proposed plans? Thank you.
And you'll see, and you'll see...
Go ahead, Mr. Maransy.
Yep, and if we keep, that's the demo plan. If we go down one more, maybe Colette, and I should show the proposed, there we go. So you can see, there's, up in the top right, you can see where the, uh, where the, where the building addition is. It's not even quite actually squared off. Uh, it's, it's smaller because of the rear yard, uh, side yard setback requirements.
Okay. Okay, um, and there is no, um, well, there, there couldn't be a roof jack, okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Um, well, actually, what's on the screen is, uh, more detailed than what I, I previewed, so, um, uh, there was not a lot of information of those plans. This seems to be a little clearer. And Mr. Maransy, are the, it looks like there's a furnace, uh, sort of closet in each unit? It's...
That, that's correct.
Some mechanical, uh, setup?
Yes. Yep, that is correct. So there's, there's no necessary common access to that, what you're seeing there in the basement plan. And I agree with you, the plans on the screen are better even than, than I, the plans I have. I think Mr. Ehrlich and I have the same plans, and I'm happy to see the greater detail on the screen.
Yeah, no, then because it, uh, there was no, none of the functions of the rooms that were outlined were, were in the plans I'm looking at. Anyway, I mean, I'm a little sounding like a broken record. There's no elevation, so it's all, again, it's hard to tell what the, what the quality of the living space would be in the basement relative to grade because there are no elevations, Madam Chair, and I, I don't know, I don't know how we tell people to do this, but, but it, it, it has to be part of a set of drawings.
Uh, I'm not sure, Colette, if you have. I did submit to ZBA staff, and I thought it might be included. I have a, a letter from James Herrick.
All right, then I didn't, then I didn't, I didn't get those as well. That's, that's very good. Okay, so the relationship to grade of the basement unit looks, uh, I mean, just from the drawing, there's no dimensions there. Well, uh, I guess there are a few, yeah, I mean, it looks okay.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters meeting on September 29th, 2020. Uh, during the meeting, residents did express concerns about parking. It seemed to be overall supportive of the owner correcting the changes needed to be made to update the building, so we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is, uh, Dev from President Kim Janey's office. Um, uh, President Janey would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Mark.
With design review?
Well, it doesn't look like it needs it, does it? I mean, it's, it's interior work.
It's that rear addition.
Yeah, they have a rear addition going on. Just in context.
Okay.
Uh, second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 859-866-3995 to 3997 Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy to cannabis dispensary retail. The violation Article 67, Section 11, use of regulation, the cannabis establishment is conditionally used in an LC sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, Attorney Mike Ross, with the business address of One International Place, uh, here today, uh, with the aforementioned address. Uh, what we have here is a former, uh, convenience store, uh, in the Rosendale section of, um, Boston, uh, which we would be making into, proposing into a conditional use required adult-use cannabis dispensary. Um, what you see in front of you is, uh, a site plan that has onsite parking, um, onsite delivery, and, um, if you scroll down, there's some additional photos that are worth looking at. This is a 1,320 square foot, um, square foot retail. There's also some space in the basement for storage, um, downstairs. So some plans, uh, if you go a little bit further down, um, there's, here's a, like an elevation, uh, and some renderings as well. That what you're seeing there is the, is the Washington Street at the top. That's the Archdale from the side. Red, the, um, customers will enter through the rear right there. See, there's a fence that encloses the parking area. They'll, uh, enter from the rear, and they'll actually leave and exit the building from the corner of Archdale and Washington. There's a, um, floor plan that kind of shows that better, I think, next here. Just quickly walk you through right here. So again, um, Archdale's along the left side of the, of the floor plan, and Washington Street's along the right-hand side, I mean, along the bottom, sorry, of your screen. And you see that the entry is in the rear, where there are, um, at least four parking spaces. Uh, the customer, this is an adult-use facility, so the, the customer, 21 and older with appropriate ID, would walk in through that, uh, initial entry lobby, would be, uh, checked, in terms of checked in, um, and then they would, they would be able to walk through the facility itself, they'd be allowed in, um, and then they would leave through that, that corner, um, where you see the exit. Uh, the, uh, downstairs, there's some additional storage. Um, there's also a room for safe, bathroom. We do have a bathroom upstairs as well. Um, uh, and, and that's, that's essentially that, uh, for the plan. I think there's a couple of the renderings below that give you a sense of what this is going to feel like. The DBA is ERBA, E R B A. Um, and that's kind of the rendering of what it would look like from the corner. Um, you know, awnings, and there is a pretty busy bus stop there on the, on Washington Street, so if there's rain, you know, people can kind of stand underneath that. That came up during the community process. A couple more renderings just down below, just to give you a feel for how it would be looking built out. Again, that, you'd be entering through that rear, that's a piece of the, the fence that would, that would be kind of containing the entire area. That's how people will go in. I think that might be it for the, for the rendering. The proposed hours of operations would be 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Um, this was approved by the Boston Cannabis Board on September 16th, and a close community agreement was entered into between the applicant and the City of Boston on October 1st. This is a...
So, Mr. Ross, would that be seven days a week?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And, um, you know, this is, I'm, I'm looking at my old notes, and it looks like this is really on the smaller end of these proposals at 1,320. Tell us how you're going to accommodate for walk-ins and how lineup is going to occur if entrance is through the rear.
Yeah, I mean, the, the intent was to put the entrance to the rear so that, to the extent there is any queuing, which we wouldn't want to encourage, we want to try to limit. You can do that through technology. Uh, you can, you can stagger people. A lot of people are ordering online, not just for COVID, but in general, just seems to be how, how it works, because sometimes certain products aren't in place. People want to secure their products, and then they want to come in and pick it up. And the technology will allow us to push people out of high-demand areas, but as more and more of these appear in Boston, there's supposed to be 52 eventually, uh, I believe, um, you, these neighborhood shops might start to function more like a neighborhood store, liquor store perhaps, where you're not getting a lot of people from outside the neighborhood. There's not a lot of, um, uh, transience through this particular neighborhood. You have a lot of people who live in this community. Um, the people that we were meeting with were, had lived in this neighborhood for many years. Um, there's been tremendous engagement on part of this team, by knocking on doors and talking to people. So those are, those are the folks that we anticipate will, will come into this. It's not going to be your commuter, uh, you know, earlier we showed something on, on the VFW. I think there you'll see a lot more traffic and a lot of more passersby's. Here, what you have is a much more smaller neighborhood kind of shop.
Okay. Um, and so you're proposing to do most of your business online by appointments and things like that? I, I'm not worried about it long-term. I am worried about it short-term, because you're right, that's a very busy bus stop, um, the crossing guards across the street, there's all kinds of, you know, activity there. And so that's, that's what I was primarily concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, it came up, that conversation, you know, came up during the, the Cannabis Board hearings. And we have to have a, a very good relationship with, um, Boston Police as well. I mean, there might be some initial opening day activities where we want to make sure we, we start very slow. We start with lots of supervision and lots of engagement with the, with, whether it's the local police or, you know, the Boston Police, or what have you. Um, but within a very short period of time, we're going to have a feel for, uh, the volumes and, and the type of, um, activity we're going to see there. The people who are involved in this shop had actually come before this board before. Uh, they have good experience, they're on the line with us now. One of them actually went to college for cannabis, I believe it or not, in California, uh, in Occidental College, or University, and, um, and did some studying and interning and working in, in the industry for several years.
Which facility was it that we approved in Boston for them?
Yeah, it was 561 Dudley. Um, what you have here is you have two...
Okay, so this is the one that we approved like a week ago, a couple weeks ago?
A few weeks ago. Yes, Madam Chair. It was, um, these are equity applicants, they're born and raised in Boston, uh, they're people of color, and they're, they have one or two or three, I mean, bodegas in their family. What they've been able to do is, you know, they have retiring uncles and that kind of thing. They've been able to approach them.
Yeah, so in this bodega, who, who are the applicants, the minority applicants?
It's Brian Chavez, who's the 100% owner, uh, and his brother Jason Chavez, who are on the call with us today. They've pointed out in meetings that there are actually four bodegas in this immediate area. They're all kind of fighting over the same set of customers, and it's a lot of competition. So in a way, this will help the other bodegas by having not as much competition, uh, and allow them to do a little bit more business.
Excellent. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Plans are, uh, what?
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, the applicants went through a thorough community process, uh, and were recently approved by the Boston Cannabis Board. I believe the Cannabis Board should have submitted a, a, a letter to the zoning board with the support they've received from the community. Uh, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have to raise hands. Let's go for it. Okay. Carla, you're on.
My name is Carmen Bello. I live in St. Gorgas Row, Rosendale. I live in here for 23 years. I through put the project, support, I through the support of project. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Jonathan, you're on.
Thank you so much. So much. And, and, I want to support this project.
Please put your...
And I live in Rosendale, a block from the, the...
Hold on.
From the site, and I've, uh...
Can you please stop? Put your name and address on the record, and just tell us what your support is based on, okay?
This process, and, so I just want to comment and support.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project? No other raised hands, Madam Chair. So, um, so, Mr. Ross?
Sure.
You already have coverage on, um, on the project on, um, VFW? When you're the applicant? Yep.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
The one in VFW says, um, well, you should read it. Um, so, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for this applicant only.
And with design review? For sign and...
Definitely with design review.
Okay, excellent. Um, all those, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed again?
Ligris.
Okay. Uh, what opposition? Motion, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 109-6127, 123 Notting Hill Road.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to just go on record on...
And who is this?
Joe.
Joe, thank you, Joe. Mr. Richard is recusing himself.
Demolition of a one-family, construction of a new building, construction of two residential dwelling units on the same lot. The violation is Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking design, a five-foot buffer. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. And Article 51, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. And Article 51, Section 56, insufficient parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Good day, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 Federal Street. I'm here today representing the owner, my client, Alex Kogan. Uh, in the proposal of this project, which is the erection of a two-family dwelling over three stories, uh, as the secretary had mentioned, we are seeking some forms of relief, specifically floor area ratio. Uh, the proposed floor area ratio in this zoning, 2F zoning sub-district is .6. We are seeking relief at, um, with a proposal of .93. Uh, additionally, the number of stories, 2.5 stories are allowed in, in a 2F 5,000 zoning sub-district. In the proposal, although the top floor is stepped back, does not qualify as a half-story, so it is a three-story building, as well as a rear yard setback. The rear yard setback requirement here is 30 feet, and we have a proposed rear yard setback of 28.8. And we have a proposed rear yard setback of 28.8 feet, seeking a variance for one foot, four inches. And additionally, there's two parking elements of relief. Parking is located entirely in the side yard, either side yard. Access from one central curb cut in the front of the property. Because parking is within five feet of a lot line in Article 51, that seek zoning release, as well as 1.75 parking spaces per unit are required here, which for the rule of rounding numbers would be four. And we have two spaces, as tandem spaces do not count as parking spaces.
So I'm sorry, so there's going to be two curb cuts for this property, is that what you're suggesting?
No, Madam Chair, there is an existing curb cut that is going to be closed. And there is one curb cut for the two parking spaces.
Okay. Can we just see how that, the, the, the parking is proposed to work?
So the second page would be the best, I believe, the best example of that on the site survey. Right here.
And is this a design overlay district?
It is, I'll have to check that, it wasn't cited as such. Because we're seeking zoning relief, I did not look into that, Madam Chair. Specifically because with any zoning relief, more than 300 square feet, it's the same exact process.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just drawing a little bit of a blank to figure out. Because some of the houses look like they might be specific, so, okay.
It certainly is subject to BPDAs designer.
Yep, okay. Can we see just the rendering, what it looks like from the exterior?
Madam Chair, just for the record, it's not, in an NDOD.
Okay, excellent.
Drawing A3 would be the best example of that. From the, the front elevation as well as the rear.
Okay. And so those are, those are, those are slider doors in the front, is, was that what it is? That's the rear version, okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, yep. So the front elevation on grade has a first story, which consists primarily of a living room and floor through pitches and a half bath. The second floor consists of a playroom and a bedroom and a full bath. And the top floor is a master bedroom. In the basement is the utilities and storage area and then an open sort of living room that would, which would be accessed via the sliders to the exterior.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you say how many bedrooms these were?
There's, each unit is two bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. And the approximate square footage is 2,400 square feet for unit one and about 2,100 square feet for unit two.
Okay.
This is the grade elevation from, there's a rear slope to the back of the lot.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are pretty good. Mr. Mahoney, I, I'm still a little puzzled by the, if you could pull, if you could pull up the site plan by the parking.
Yep, yep.
You're suggesting closing the curb cut on the left to put one right smack dab in the middle of the front facade of the house. And then yet the driveway is on the, the driveway is on the right, but you can only go about halfway back because you run into the, the set of steps, right?
Not exactly. If you go to the end, oh, I guess we can see it on this side. If you could see underlying the, where it accesses the street, if you zoom out on this picture just a little bit, you can see the existing driveway is on the left as we're, as we're looking at, that's the current-
Right. No, that's what I said, it's on the left and then you're moving it over to the center.
That, that's correct, so we're closing that one and moving it over to the center, it will be-
Why wouldn't you move it over to the right? And so it's not, so it's not in front, right in front of the house and it's more in line with where the driveway is going to be?
Oh, I understand, Mr. Ehrlich, there's parking on either side, so the parking-
Yeah, because, um, this, there's a temptation, I think, as I look at this, for front yard parking.
Yeah.
Because, you know, yes, we would like the parking on the side yard, but the, the layout really tempts you to park in the front yard.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what's, what's your notion, that there be one space on the left and two on the right, tandem?
Uh, one space on the left, one space on the right. Tandem parking doesn't count in Article 51. That is one of the elements that we're seeking relief for.
Well, I, I mean, I just think it's a little problematic in terms of design, both in terms of the appearance and also in terms of the issue that the chair raised about the temptation to, to, to use. I mean, in my neighborhood, we have someone who got approval for a garage and then uses the front of the garage as front yard parking, which was not what it was intended to do. Yeah, I mean, that's pretty common. And I think this, this lends itself to that.
Okay.
I, I would, anyway, so we can, that can be dealt with under the design review.
Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record and support this proposal with the request for BPDAs design review. We conducted a butters meeting on September 9th. There was a mix of opinions there. There were some residents, including a director butter, that were in support of this project and other residents that had concerns. I believe we forwarded three letters of opposition to the board. Most of their concerns seemed outlined with just existing conflicts with some of the renters in the area who are students at one of the local universities and concerns regarding an increase in density. We feel, you know, we respect the opinions of these butters. We feel that those concerns and the proposal for the increased density is pretty moderate for this area. It's proposal for a two-family in an existing two-family zone. And I know from the intention that was presented to us, one, the owner was hoping to occupy one of the units as well. So we feel that the presence of an owner-occupied household would make sure that some potential conflicts with renters would be resolved. Thank you. And also, sorry, they went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and received support of them as well. I'm not sure if Annabelle is on, but they just had some concerns with the design review and they also echoed requests for BPDAs design review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We only have two letters of non-support and it's basically density and changing from a one to a two-family.
Good afternoon, this is Maury McCray from Counselor Liz Breeding's office. The counselor would like to go on record as being in opposition to this project. The counselor has no problem with the construction of a two-family on this lot, but she has concerns about the scale of this, this proposal and is also concerned about its future, the potential for its future use as a multi-bedroom rental, given such, such a design inclusion as a full in the basement.
Yeah, okay. Madam Chair, I have to raise hands.
Thank you.
Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record and support. It is a two-family in a two-family zone. The lot size is consistent with the other two families. We do request design review for the house, as we did have questions on the parking as well. So we do request BPDAs design review to sort that out. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tina Young. I'm the owner of 86 and 88 Caldwell Hordes. My property is behind this 123 Notting Hill. This is in regards to opposition of Section 9 and sufficient rear yard setback. We share a backyard with the property and our property is at the bottom of the house. So our concern is about construction disruption to our current tenants due to construction noise, but mostly construction debris that may go down to our property backyard over time with the construction. And lastly, overall aversion and possible need and maintenance of the planned backyard wall over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, you heard the concern about the rear yard, any comments on that?
Yes, Madam Chair. With the proposed construction, it's 28.8 feet away from the rear lot line. That building that she's referencing is one building away and is not on the rear lot line. It would be unlikely that there would be any construction debris from a three-story home that would reach 30 feet to the rear. Although I will alert my client and his contractor to be compliant with OSHA rules and build within the International Residential Code 2015.
And is, does, I'm assuming the applicant is Alexander Kogan?
Yes.
Has he done any other construction?
No, Madam Chair, he's an owner-occupant for the proposal.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, subject to BPDAs design review.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, you heard the issue that we have with the parking, the front yard parking. That really needs to be completely resolved through a single driveway, okay?
Do you care what side of the lot it goes on? Because I think that's, it just seems like it has to be on one side or the other and not the middle.
Exactly.
Stay where it is.
Exactly, no, we don't care. We just need to note that there is a bend in the road there and whatever works traffic-wise, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Following the next two cases, calling BOA 921545, 176 Gladstone Street. There's a companion case, BOA 921544, 170 Gladstone Street. This is for 176. This will be one of two dwellings on the same lot, no work to be done. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use is conditional. Article 53, Section 9, the lot size for a dwelling unit insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, 53-57, two dwellings on the same lot. This is for 170 Gladstone. This is seeking to erect a residential building with eight units and four parking spaces. This will be one of two dwellings on one lot. The violation, Article 53, Section 8, the multifamily dwelling unit is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot size to erect a new dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the required front yard setback is insufficient on Gladstone Street. Article 53, Section 9, the required front yard setback is insufficient on Breed Street. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 53-57, two dwellings on one lot. And Article 53, Section 56.5A, off-street parking design access and maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Representing the petitioner, Joe Fagoni. And I also have James Christopher from our attorney and counsel today. What you're, just a point of clarification, this project, since we had deferred last, has been modified. So the description has changed and the plans will reflect that, that Mr. Ehrlich has. We are seeking now to erect a three-story building with four residential units and four parking spaces. What you're looking at in the front is the picture of the dilapidated garages that aren't functional now. We're proposing to replace those garages and to erect a three-story building where those garages stand as now. There's also that companion case, because there is a four-unit building on that same lot that's existing. All of this would be proposed condos and renovated when completed.
So, so you're combining the lots?
It's only one lot, Madam Chair, it's one lot, I'm sorry.
It's one lot and so 176 Gladstone is, is four units, how many units? I couldn't tell from the, from Google Maps.
It's four existing units.
Four existing units. And then, can you show us, please, the rendering for 170 Gladstone Street?
So we have, in the elevations, it's close up. We have the front of the building would be on the Gladstone Street side with the parking you can see here, Madam Chair, coming along the Breed Street entrance. So there'd be a curb cut with the Breed Street and where Breed Street is now, that would lead you to the ground level, that parking level. And that would house our mechanical room and sprinkler room. The access to the building, because this is a corner lot, as you can see, would be along the Gladstone Street side. So, and these are proposed condominium units for all of them.
So, so these are, this is now three stories, four units with four parking spaces.
Correct, Madam Chair, would you like me to go over the layout of the units?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So the, as was mentioned, the ground level would be garage or the basement level, garage, trash room, mechanical room, sprinkler room, access off of Breed Street. As we go up to the first floor, we would have unit one and unit two. Those are one-bedroom, one-bath units at 763 square feet with rear balcony. The second floor would house unit three. That's a proposed three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, 1,800-square-foot unit. Floor three would house unit four. That's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath with a balconies as well. You can go over the violations as-
Is there a roof deck proposed on this building?
There are no roof decks at all proposed, just balconies off the rear and two on the side.
Okay, so can you walk through your violations then?
Sure. On 170, there are two buildings on one lot, as was mentioned. The use violation, so this is a 2F area, we are proposing four units. The FAR, although with taking off that floor, we've gone down from 2.8, we're now at 1.8. And 4.8 is what's allowed. We, we took away the height violation, so that no longer exists in feet. But there is in stories, two-and-a-half stories is what's allowed, we're proposing three. Our front yard is, is one, it's modals on the corner, but 15 would be required. Side yard is four foot four and three foot two on either side. Seven would be required. We do not have a rear yard on this, just because it's zero, but just the way this building lines up, that's where our curb cut would be. And then parking, six spaces would be required. We have four, but just to point out, we're restoring three resident on-street parking spaces along Gladstone Street with that existing curb cut where the garages are now.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. In a tramway with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held four hours meeting where the applicant addressed several of the concerns expressed by the abusers. Remove the four-story addition, reduce the number of units and increase the parking ratio. Also, we received 22 letters of support from abusers and resident Orient Heights, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Binetti from Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards' office. The council would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have 21 letters of support and 14 letters of opposition.
So what's the opposition based on?
All 14 of them.
Just generally, because though actually much of the opposition might be based on the eight-
I believe it was, because these are all the letters.
Yeah, okay, okay, cool. Anybody else to speak?
Hi, Madam Chair, I have to raise hands.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, you're unmuted?
Yes, hi, I'm Elizabeth Bagley. I have known Joe for over 20 years. He's a good friend, but more importantly, for today's purposes, a good neighbor. Moved off my street in the last few years, but has continued to be a frequent visitor and is still entrenched in the neighborhood and the community who he grew up in and he remains strongly tied to. Thank you.
If I are unmuted?
Hi, hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Emma Belitsky. I am director butter across the street on Gladstone Street. And my concern is this proposed construction is asking to override at least 10 sensible residential zoning restrictions. And I would like to bring your attention that surface area listed 5,300, sorry, square feet of the lot of 17076 Gladstone Street is incorrect. The actual area is 3,760 square feet area. As shown on the Boston Parcel View map, lot size equation has triangular shape. The bigger measurement is- The bigger measurement is probably obtained by erroneously using the formula to measure triangular lot applying rectangle-shaped formula. My husband is former real estate appraiser and he measured this lot and obtained 3,764 square feet. The developers proposing to erect on 3,764 square feet lot was three-story building with four units. Next, next.
So ma'am, so ma'am, hold on. What's your opposition based on then?
Because lot size is not sufficient and it's two building, excessive building on one lot. It creates fire hazard and it's.
So your concern is that it's creating a fire hazard because it's two buildings on the same lot?
Lot size is not sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
764.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
I have no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve subject to BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 102-0204-112 Myrtle Street. List to confirm occupancy has 10 residential apartments, a full-gut interior renovation of the entire building, building roof deck. There'll be no change of occupancy. The violation, Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please. Do you have a mute, Mr. Moran?
John, you're unmuted. John, you're unmuted. Don't hit the mute button.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
We can, yes. Go ahead, put your name and address on the record.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass. Joining me in this presentation is the owner, Ken Lyons, co-council. This matter was before the board and was deferred for additional community process. The only relief being sought today is an increase in FAR. The property is located in 8265 Zone District in Beacon Hill. The FAR is two. The existing is non-conforming. It is 5.66. And through reconfiguration of utilities, it is increased by 0.13 to 5.73. It's, the FAR is the only relief sought. The building is, consists of 10 units. The garden level is 814 square feet, a two-bedroom unit. The first floor has two small units, 338 square feet, a one-bedroom, and 362 square feet, a one-bedroom. The floors two through four have a small unit, one bedroom of 370 square feet and a two-bedroom larger unit of 551 square feet. The fifth floor is a single unit, two bedrooms, 977 square feet with exclusive use of the roof deck.
So, Mr. Moran, why did we defer you?
A butter spoke and said he was unaware of the community process and a motion suggestion was to do extensive, to reach out to that butter which we have. Ken Lyons can address the amount of reach out, but I might add, he said that there was, he felt there was no community process. There was robust community.
Okay, okay. So, and then, did Mr. Ehrlich and the rest of the board, please refresh my memory. Was there any concern about the size of the units or anything else?
No, no. There was, the only concern was after people spoke in support that there was one butter who said that he was never notified, where in fact, the co-owner had participated in the site meeting and at the Beacon Hill Civic Association. The number in size of the units.
Hold on, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shanice from the South of Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did hold an abutters meeting prior to the pandemic and it was generally supported by abutters. They did, as mentioned, receive the vote of non-opposition from the Beacon House Civic Association. John and I, I believe we spoke, or Ken, we spoke about a couple of butters' outstanding concerns, but the applicant did, as I said, speak with me and forwarded me multiple times to communicate and collaborate, but the applicant was unable and successful to get in contact with these abutters. So we do not feel that this should delay the proposal as there is substantial support on record at this time. So we would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
And Shanice, you're comfortable because this is not, you know, one of those units, those, what are we calling them? Those executive suites? That these are actual residential units?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, other than this one, but she's from the previous case.
Okay, thank you.
We have one more person. They just said something.
Madam Chair, Mark Fortune here, the secretary. We have one letter of support and two letters of opposition. The opposition is the roof deck.
I just have, just, someone just contacted me through the chat. Fernanda, you have the disconnected devices.
This is, my name is. I would like to check the number. I don't think there was adequate process in terms of butters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Yes, several things. One, I think there's a problem that they expand, that they're expanding the density of the building. It's already a dense one. The building has been very poorly managed, basically no oversight. People flipping lit cigarette plots into the street. Multiple violations. Police having to go in several times to stop garbage going on into the building.
You know, so we can barely, we can barely hear you.
I'm sorry about the connection.
Did you send in a letter or anything with detailing your concerns? Mr. Moran, who is the, who is the property owner here?
Ken Lyons, who is registered as a contributor. He can address the community outreach.
Okay. So I'm sure that you've heard the advocate about the state of the chair. Tell us about the roof deck.
Madam Chairwoman, this is Ken Lyons. I purchased the building a few years ago and the building had been long neglected by previous owners. I hired the firm of Meyer &amp; Meyer immediately to oversee a complete reconstruction of the building, the exterior and the interior. There has been very responsible management. I'm an attorney in Boston and I own other buildings and have taken very well care of them. I've reached out to this particular neighbor.
Mr. Lyons, can you talk to us about this roof deck?
The, Madam Chair, the roof deck is, would be exclusive to the penthouse unit.
And what's the access to that roof deck?
An existing headhouse.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, if I may add, the concern before the civic association was trash management and Mr. Lyons had proposed in a letter of understanding that the lease would contain detailed management of trash. He would propose detailed management of civility on the roof by the occupant of the fifth-floor unit.
Mr. Lyons, may I have you on for a minute?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Can I have confirmation that these are going to be residential units and not executive suites or anything else?
That's correct, Madam Chairwoman. They are for 12-month leases. We inherited a building that was very poorly managed and fell into disrepair. We're going to manage it very well. We are going to have enforceable lease provisions for the penthouse occupants that they respect their neighbors and there will be legally enforceable terms that require them not to have noise violations or interfere with neighbors in any way. There was no roof deck previously.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second, Joe.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work today.
Madam Chair, the last things of the day are the hearings from the subcommittee chaired at 1010 Mass Ave. Case BOA 1110114, 79 Putnam Street was working unit nine and renovating the entire home including. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1112796, 43 Cook Street, was installed a dorm on the rear patio deck and the rear yard. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 11150157, Clermont Park, was the, was the approval of 16-by-3 steel balconies increased to 16-by-5 on the fourth level. It was approved. Case BOA 1097582, 11 HF Clermont Park, it was a constructed rear deck, a second story above grade. It was approved. Case BOA 1070834, 537 East First Street, was a change of occupancy of a beauty shop. No work to be done, it was approved. Case BOA 1117419, 28 Woodwood Street, it was a roof deck, it was approved. Case BOA 1114533, 1A Cottage Street, proposed two-story addition, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1123936, 13 Fox Point Road, was constructing two, constructing two kind garages with accessory second lot. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1122443, 11 Harford Street, was denied without prejudice. Case BOA 10551271, 654 Washington Street, was a change of occupancy of a beauty salon. It was approved. Case BOA 1050234, 25 Latchmont Street, is removing and replacing the first-floor front porch and constructing a new second-floor porch, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 11112586, 66 Alvin Street, was a change of occupancy from a one-family to a two-family. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1110887, 5 Creendle Street, to confirm occupancy as a single family and extend living space in the attic. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1016610, 22 Hopewell Road, it was an off-street park near two vehicles, it was denied. Case BOA 1120997, 16 Faraday Street, was remove the existing roof, constructing new roof. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1097598, 491 Metropolitan Ave, it was a change of occupancy from a single family to a two-family and proposed renovations of the building and the rear inside, a new deck. It was approved with no bedroom in the basement. Case BOA 1092526, 354 Belgrade Avenue, it was an existing first-floor room. Demo and renovate the existing kitchen, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 110178734, Cass Street, was constructing a new rear dorma. Existing single family was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1110053, 29 Meredith Street, it was a constructed portion of exterior deck, 6x8. It was approved. Case BOA 1092470, 49 Undine Road, it was denied without prejudice. Case BOA 109372178, Washington Street, it was withdrawn. Case BOA 1057679, 18 Birchcroft Road, it was deferred to 1121 to the subcommittee. Case BOA 1095049223, 227 Bowden Street, was to change the purpose, install carpet, paint walls and sign change of occupancy from a dry cleaner to a retail store. It was approved with BPDA. That concludes the subcommittee findings. So we need a motion. Motion to accept the recommendations.
Sir, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.